On this Tuesday, April eighth, two thousand and twenty-five, and welcome my council members that are all here this evening, along with a lot of our city staff, and we welcome the general public and also those who have joined us remotely. We'll start out our meeting this evening with a pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Williams, after which Councilmember Lamone will give us opening remarks.
All arise, repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, we thank thee for the opportunity we have to come and gather as community members, staff, and the council and mayor to be able to make decisions on behalf of our citizens at this time. We ask that thy spirit will be with us as we discuss important topics that will affect the livelihood of our community and that we can make decisions with our, with an open mind and open heart and be able to lead by examples as we serve in our community. Please bless that we can have discussions with respect for one another and civility, and we love thee and say these things in the name of our Saviour and Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. We'll now move to item number four, approval of tonight's meeting agenda, and I don't think we have any, no changes, so I'll ask for a motion.
Mayor, with that, I'll approve tonight's agenda.
We have a motion by Councilmember Jensen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Anderson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now move on to our open session and invite anybody to come forward and address the council at this time, and we'll allot you three minutes to do that. And I would ask you if you're here for one of the two public hearings to keep your remarks till we have our public hearing. So any of those who would like to come forward and address the council this, may do so. And would you just state your name?
Hi, my name is Tamara Naylor, and my name's not really important tonight, though. I would like you to consider me a general resident of PG. I just wanted to share a couple of thoughts as you discuss the budget for next year. And I'm concerned about decisions that have been made in Pleasant Grove in the last few years. I'm concerned about the half a million dollar over budget you spent last year that was reported last week. I'm concerned that no explanation was given as to why we went over budget by half a million dollars last year, no comment on where that money went, and nobody here even asked where the money went or what it was used for. As we're looking forward to two thousand and twenty-six, we have a large expenditure with a new school district. I'm wondering what plans are being made for the new school district expenses. We were threatened with a thirty-four percent property tax increase if the vote was to go in a three-way split, which it did. I'm wondering what's being put into place now so that the residents don't get hit with such a large bill when those things come through? I don't know, is this a discussion or is that all? I just need to make my, okay, great. So those are my concerns. Last time, last meeting, there was a discussion about hiring someone part-time or adding hours for a, to communicate fluffy items around Pleasant Grove, and I think, I think the residents of Pleasant Grove actually want to hear the financial, more serious things that are going on. What's going to be happening to their budgets? What hits are they going to take to their grocery bill to sustain things like a large park? Those are my concerns, and I've had them for a while. I appreciate the time to say something. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I see no one else coming forward, so we'll now close our open session and bring it back to the council here, and we'll move to item number six. Our consent items for this evening are, A, City Council meeting minutes for the March fourth and March eighteenth meetings, B, to consider for approval payment number eight for CMM Aquatics for the twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-four pool work project, C, consider for approval change order number three FX Construction for AF Diversion Reconstruction Project, and D, consider for approval payment number four for excess construction for AF Division Reconstruction Project, and E, to consider for approval payment reports for March twentieth, twenty-five, and April third, two thousand and twenty-five. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent items as read by you.
We have a motion by Councilmember Jensen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Anderson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We have no board commission or committee appointments or presentations this evening, and we'll move directly to nine A, our public, one of our public hearings this evening, and nine A is a public hearing to consider ordinance two thousand and twenty-five dash zero zero four for zone change from R one eight, single-family residential zone to PO, professional office zone located at seventeen eighty-three, eighteen oh seven, eighteen forty-one, and eighteen fifty-five west, eleven hundred north. Approximately seven point five-three acres in the R one, single-family residential zone. The applicant is Maple Springs of PG Holdings, and the presenter, turn the time over to Director Cardenas.
Mayor, council, what I'm presenting today, or for the first item that we have here in the agenda today, is for a rezone, okay? So the applicant, which is a third party, is not the, this is not a staff application against the application from a, from Maple Springs of PG Holding. They're the landowners, and what they're suggesting is a change of zone, okay? This is an item that we continue, so I'm just gonna do some broad strokes, but if you guys want me to go very specific, I'll go specific on it, okay? So right here, I'm gonna zoom in in this area. This is North County Boulevard, running south to north, north to south, and we have right here this road that I'm again pointing out with my mouse, eleven hundred north. So it's in that, in that quadrant right here, the property that we're talking about, or the applicant is proposing, is these four parcels. That's why when the mayor was reading, he was reading four different addresses for different parcels, is this one right here. That's one, two, three, and four, okay? What the applicant is proposing is to go from the designation of single-family in at least eight thousand square feet per lot, as minimum required area, to professional offices, kind of like from residential to commercial. What type of commercial? It's a very restrictive type of commercial. It's not like the type of commercial that will allow, for example, a storage units. It's not a type of commercial that will allowed manufacturing. It, that's not the type of commercial. The type of commercial is this zone that we have right here in pink, that is called the PO or professional office, okay? So again, the applicant is proposing to change the classification of these four parcels from single-family residential to professional office. The entire area for this, the entire acreage for this area, as the mayor read it, is, is seven point and a half acres, seven point fifty-three. Let me show you something really quick, a couple maps that I, that I have right here. Now that we know where it is, we're gonna zoom in a little bit into the area, and again, it's this seven point five-three acres, okay? So the, the area that the applicant is proposing to rezone is adjacent to PO. These parcels right here are already into the PO, into the PO or the professional office zone. There's two properties right here, as we discussed last time, that they're residential, zoned in the residential. This third property right here is a residential use in a PO, in a commercial zone. So that gives the, the designation of what we've heard as grandfathering, but the legal term is legal, non-conforming, meaning it's legal, but it doesn't conform because it's in a different zone, okay? It's a residential use in a commercial zone. Let me see. Recently, and when I say recently, I'm talking the last five to, to, to eight years, we've been in this area, this area, which our general plan contemplates to eventually include all of that area, including the seven point five-three and this, and the lots right here, as a future land use that they can go into PO. So the first, the first resource that I have as a staff, when someone asks me about a rezone, is go to our general plan. We have a general plan already adopted. We have a map in our general plan about future land uses, what we think is appropriate on those areas. Our map is like this. In these maps, we have different categories, okay? In this map, in the future land use map, we have different categories. For example, right here, we have the single-family, very low density. That's the category. That's not the zone. In the single-family, very low density, we have, for example, includes RR, which is not the residential, it's rural residential. We include R one twenty, which is pretty close, twenty thousand square feet, but we don't include R one A. So first thing that I do is look at the general plan and say, yes, you know what? If you want to go from RR to R one twenty, yes, because my future land use map tells me that we contemplate those, those future changes. In the case of what the applicant is proposing is right here. I'm gonna zoom out a little bit. Our general plan, actually, I'm gonna take this from here. Our general plan, as you guys can see, includes all this area in pink, meaning that if we have different classifications for our land, and we say, if we want to have professional offices, where in the city, where would be the best place to have those professional offices? Kind of like, where are we gonna put those doctor offices that, that we need? And we, in our general plan, designated that that would be the area. So in this case, the general plan backs up the decision of the applicant, the proposal, not a decision, backs up the proposal of rezoning. Now, within that, we have different zones. It's kind of like, sometimes it gets a little confusing, because in this case, the land classification is the same as the name of the zone, professional office, okay? But this map is the map of my general zone of the future lands, and this is kind of like broader, okay? And then we go into the inside of that map, and we have the zoning map, okay? And in our zoning map, we can see that even this area right here is right now in the rural, sorry, in the, in the residential zone. The reason why I show you that map is to show you that it's not something that is outside of the vision that we have of the future of our city in that area, okay? This item, Mayor, went to the, to the planning commission, and they received a recommendation of approval. There was one person, it wasn't unanimous, there was one person that voted against it, and the rest of them voted for, for the rezone, okay? That's what I have, Mayor and council, if you guys have specific questions. I, I make, sorry, before I finish, I make this map because I know last time there were some questions about access and stuff like that for the residential, and that's why I make this map, so we can see in this map that the access actually is, is outside of the proposed rezone. As you guys can see, the access for, for the lots right here. I know there were some questions regarding the, the well, a water well as well, and I had the opportunity during this interim, during this time, to talk to the applicant, and I think it was one of the assignments to the applicant to go talk to the neighbors around. The applicant is right here. It looks like I talked to a couple of the residents, and they told me they, they had a meeting, so I don't know if we want to give them some time for them to express what their opinions is or what the meeting were about, okay? Any specific questions that we have or not specific about the project before I sit down?
Well, it, sorry, this has been around, this, this has been around for a while, right? We've, this like second, third, fourth, different type of applications. I think at one time, this was all residential, and I think my pointer's not working. These, these homes, I think, must have sold off, this property down here for the commercial, is that correct?
I can see, I can see them, the, the list.
I'm just talking about these, these existing homes in here, yeah, at one time were, this was all residential, right?
It was.
Obviously, they sold off to this commercial in here, I think, right? And that, that's kind of why now they're kind of locked in there and...
During my, during my time serving here, working here for the city, we, these two areas right here, they were fully residential as well, and they were rezoned from residential to professional office. And from there, then they submitted the, the site plan. I want to make emphasis, what we have, the item that we have today in front of us is for the rezone, to change the designation. I don't have a site plan, okay? I don't know exactly, probably the applicant knows more about this, where the buildings might be located, exactly what type of use. I've been informed that he wants to do medical offices, but the, the specifications of what exactly could happen or what's gonna be built, I don't have it at this time because that comes at the time of a site plan. Right now, the item that we have in front of us is for a rezone.
And I think there was one more question, and that was if there was going to be an island, if we were leaving one or two parcels that, that were...
Yes, we are leaving an island, but that's legal to do.
But it's legal now.
Okay.
They changed that statute several years ago.
Okay.
And, and usually, Council, Anderson, as big area, when we have a large area that eventually gets to be rezoned, first thing we have the general plan that says, yes, we think that that whole area could change zones, and usually it doesn't happen all the times at all, the, the entire area. Sometimes it go, it goes section, sometimes it takes five years, sometimes, to be honest, it takes twenty years, but as long as the, the, the broader vision of the general plan stays the same, then eventually those, those turn into, into, into a different zone. But yes, at this point, these two parcels right here, they're not proposed to, to, to be rezoned, okay? The, the only area that is proposed to be rezoned is that seven point five-three acres.
Thank you, Daniel. Anything else for Daniel, while we're cutting?
I, I'll have a question maybe for Tina, but I want to wait till after we hear...
Okay. Okay, before we open the public hearing, I'd like to give the opportunity, because this is a, this was from our last meeting, have the developer come forward and maybe update us on some of the things we asked, that maybe you do before you, and bring it back to us.
Yes, Mayor and council members, thank you for giving us the opportunity to discuss this application again. After the meeting from last month, we did have the opportunity to meet with the property owners in those three lots to the west. We met with them last week. I think that that meeting went very well. We were able to answer some of their questions, help them understand what we were wanting to do. When we left that meeting, they were all in support of our zone change. They felt like it was a good use of the property. It was not going to negatively impact them in the way that they thought it was beforehand. I know a few of them are here tonight, so I don't want to speak too much for them. I'll let them say their feelings, but when we left that meeting last week, it seemed like they were in support of our requested zone change, and we'd addressed many of their concerns that they had. And I just want to reiterate what Mr. Cardenas said, that this does follow the general plan for the city, and we feel like it's the best use of the property for us, obviously, but also we feel like it is the best use for all of the residents of Pleasant Grove. It's gonna provide services to the members of the community, and we feel like it's gonna help maximize tax revenue for the city so that the city can do other things that they want to benefit and to serve the residents. I know that there was some questions and concerns about the access to that back lot that has that road. Like Mr. Cardenas said, we have verified that road is not on our property and would not be affected by the rezone, so that kind of little bottom flag lot there would still have their access, and we've talked with those property owners, and they're comfortable with what we would be doing with the property if the zone change was granted. I know that there are some concerns from some other residents that are to the east of the property, and we didn't have the opportunity to meet with them, and we only met with the ones to the west, but I know that there are potential concerns about what is the boundary and the separation between the properties going to look like. My understanding is that the code would require us to put up a certain type of fence and have it be a certain height. We've talked with them briefly before this meeting, that we're willing to work with them on what that fence looks like, if that is what they want, if they would prefer to have it more open, and we're willing to explore and look at ways that we can keep it more open and accessible. I do think that it will be more open and that there will be more open space with the professional office designation than if it were to stay the current residential zoning, because with the current zoning, that seven point five-three acres would turn into twenty-eight different single-family home lots, and so that would be a lot more density than what we're proposing with potentially three professional office buildings. One would have a medical same-day surgery center. We anticipate and hope that in the future, the other ones would have medical offices, doctors' offices, that sort of thing. But there would be a lot more open space with that type of a plan than if we went with the twenty-eight lots for residential as currently planned. I think that addresses most of the concerns. If the mayor or council have any questions, I'd happy to answer what I can. We are still in the very early stages. We've got some tentative ideas of what we'd like to do, but we obviously haven't gone to the expense of having formal plans drawn up and architects and that sort of thing be involved because of the cost until we knew that we were able to, to move forward with the project.
Counsel, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't know if it would be helpful as, if any of the residents come up and have questions or concerns, we're happy to address those as well, so thank you.
Thank you. We'll now open our public hearing and invite anybody to come forward and address the council this time, and we will, please state your name, and you will be allotted three minutes each.
Carrie Hammond, eighteen seventy-seven west, eleven hundred north. So we have the little property in the back, residential use zoned commercial, apparently. And so we're down the little lane in question. We had, I actually read through the, all the zoning codes. That was fun. Having read through the codes, looking at, looking up and looking at the general plan online, and then having met with Maple Springs, we're feeling like the professional office zoning might be the better way to go. I think that we're leaning towards that more so than a lot of homes, a lot of homes on very tiny lots. Seems like a lot of congestion twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, and we think that the professional office zoning and the office buildings would be an actual better situation, even given that we are an island. So it's okay if we're an island. I still, even though we're gonna say yea on the professional office zone, I still am gonna have the same concerns, and I would ask that as the site plans come forth and we start reviewing and considering what can, what is gonna go in there and what that is gonna look like, that we adhere strictly to the city ordinances and administrative code for professional office and commercial zones that border residential zones with regard to dumpsters and lighting and landscaping and traffic and parking and all of those things, odors, everything. So I would ask that the council really, and the planning commission and whoever is gonna be involved in that at those points along the way, consider those things and make sure that that adherence to those codes happens from the onset and ongoing into the future, because we are still there, and even though we're an island, we are still there, and we need to be able to live there and sleep at night and all of the things that you do at your house, okay? So that's my deal.
Thank you.
Lori, did Lori get here?
No.
Okay, Kristiansons were en route from Manti, so I don't know if they're gonna make it, but they did also say that they were favoring the, Kristiansons would be the one just in front of me. They did also say that they were favoring the professional office over the alternatives, which included eight thousand square foot lots, so there you go.
Carrie, thank you for sharing, absolutely.
My name is Kathy Anderson. I live at nine forty-eight north, sixteen hundred west. I have lived there for the last twenty-seven, twenty-eight years, so we have watched the area grow around us. I do want to say I'm grateful for whoever gave that opening prayer. I think it's really important that the decisions that are made, they do affect people's lives right through where we live. For myself, it's a couple of houses over. For some of my neighbors, it's right in their backyard. The new subdivision that's gone up, those homes are enormous, and they really have made an impact on, on our view and on some people's yards, which is difficult. I know that's a different topic, but what I'm saying is these decisions really do impact us. I am grateful for other people's opinions, and I don't live right on the border, so that being said, we need homes that are smaller, ones that families can afford, and this is a beautiful area that you could put a lovely subdivision in that would really build the area. I'm grateful that it's not being looked at for apartments or anything like that, so I'm really thankful for that. I can think of worse things than putting in a medical place, but it would be really nice if you would consider smaller homes that people could afford that would make a difference for a lot of people. And anyway, I do think we have a lot of medical buildings in this area, so it might be nice to do something a little different, but thank you for your time.
Hello, my name's Gordon Jarvis. I'm, I've got the house that's right next to the pediatrics or the, not the pediatrics, but the dentist office right here, I'm right here. And after the meeting, yes, we, we kind of agreed that the, that it would be better, because I look at the, the River Health, it's just on the north side of us. If that would have been homes, it would have been a disaster. So I'm glad that they put in a medical center there. I think that actually benefited us. They haven't had the impact, but the, I do have to say that the city did fail with the dentist office, because I have seventeen lights facing my house at night, and so we had to get blackout curtains for the whole west side. Yeah, that, that was kind of a disaster. They brought the grate up, so two feet for the fence, so an eight-foot fence is not even six-foot, so, but as far as this, I think if they do stick with the lighting codes, the property doesn't affect me as much as the one on the west side of me, but yeah, I, I, we agreed upon the surgical center.
Thank you.
Honorable mayors, city council, hello. Mike Adamson is my name. I live just on the south side there, right akin to the lot, and I just wanted to be able to share, maybe kind of split down the middle. And I hadn't had the chance to speak with my neighbors until this morning and kind of heard their decision on what they felt was good after meeting with the developer slash contractor. I'm here to support my neighbors. I've been in the frame of mind that I do not want a medical center basically right next to my home. However, I will say that I, I don't have the, quite the impact at my home that they have with theirs. And so if that is their decision, could I just ask the developer, we talked just barely a little bit beforehand, and also just for you going forward, as we take a look at this in the future, this is a medical facility, and I actually have a wife who's got stage four cancer, who's here with me tonight, and she's undergoing treatment, believe it or not, right there at the Utah Cancer Center, okay? If we're gonna have a surgical center or other medical facilities that are there, that should be placed for a hope and healing. And so my perspective would be, if we are not going to have homes and have the enjoyment of having neighbors around us, and if we've had challenges with very large buildings that obstruct the view in other homes like Kathy mentioned, I am hoping that with the development going forward, that we could have something basically with landscaping and hopefully maybe even a park, something that would be a walking trail, something that would be, if people are receiving their surgery there, that maybe they don't just have to go home and be able to have to deal with recuperation there. Let it be something that can be something that would be entire benefit to the entire community. We've got a lot of buildings around us. We don't need more buildings, so if we're gonna have more buildings here, which maybe are necessary and can further medical progress and development and help people's lives, can we use maybe some wisdom of Solomon and cut it down the middle and make some beautiful landscaping and be able to have something that would be, again, maybe more productive mentally and emotionally for not only us as neighbors, you've got also the, another hope for healing home right there. You've got the old folks home that's there right across the street, and many of them are coming up around in our neighborhood in their wheelchairs and things like that that are specifically looking for a place to go. And sometimes they're gonna be getting hit by cars that have become down a very busy road there on nine twenty-nine thirty, as well as all the fire trucks and first responders that are going through here that some are here tonight. They respond there almost daily. So my proposal would be going for... So my proposal would be going forward, could we please take a look at that? If we're gonna vote to change the residential, let's make it something that's gonna be hopeful, helpful, and healing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Steve Winter, I'm, I'm right here on seventeen twenty-seven west, ten sixty north. I'm just concerned about the access, having a through road coming through there, and if they do do it, who's gonna straighten out our cul-de-sac? Who puts the bill for that? Because some of us work for government and don't get paid worth a dang. So, I just wanna know where the accesses are gonna be, in and out. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I'd like to express my appreciation of the City Council for postponing a vote till today, from last meeting I wasn't able to attend, and you guys were very cognizant that our neighborhood wasn't very well represented, and I appreciate you guys get, considering our opinions. So I'm Mike McClellan, I live on the street that goes north-south right here, seventeen hundred west, and I bought my home eight years ago, roughly, and I bought it, and I looked at the zoning eight years ago, because I was aware of all the commercial and the development that's going on Pleasant Grove, and I didn't want any more development near me, and I saw that this was zoned single family, R-one through eight, which is exactly the same zoning as all the current residential stuff to the east, which is where I live. And I don't see a need for more medical businesses in my backyard, there's a lot of development along I-15 that is totally appropriate for that kind of development, and it's already zoned for that. And I think that changing based on a general plan, that's what the general plan is, I don't think that it considered precisely this lot very definitively, which is what a general plan doesn't do, so that's okay. And, so I'm opposed to changing that zoning based upon the residential zoning. We have a high demand for residential development in Pleasant Grove as well, the development to the east of our neighborhood, it got proposed, and it's selling very rapidly, they've developed twenty or thirty homes, whatever it is, and they're getting moved into. And so I don't see any reason why the developer can't still return a dollar on his development in the single-family current zoning. And the, the current zoning, the R-one through eight, I believe is what it was classified as, it's totally congruent with all the surrounding residential development, and as Mike Adamson said, I'm highly opposed to anything more dense than R-one through eight. I, I would love to see some smaller homes, but not smaller together. But, the R-one through eight would allocate, based on my background in city development and planning, there's no way they're gonna fit more than twenty or thirty homes in that seven point five acres, with the roads and the access and the lot requirements, so I highly support maintaining as it is, and we wouldn't see as compact a development as, as Mike Adamson was concerned about. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jasmine Watkins, and we live in this cul-de-sac in this house right here, so our fence is just right there where the lot is. I just wanted to second what Mike McClellan and Mike Adamson said. I have four very, very small children, and we would love to see more neighbors and kids that could possibly play with our children. And of course, more, like, smaller homes, and like he said, not smaller together and not high up, but if it were to be a medical center, then I really support what Mike Adamson said about having nice landscaping around, and a place that is enjoyable to just be around for those who are in the medical facility, or the neighbors that are looking into it, and that's all I wanna say. Thank you.
Anyone else?
John Japanes Meyer, ten sixty-nine west, eight-ten north. I am actually opposed to this. I, I think it's naive to think those people that are in between, we have commercial, we have some residential, and if you go commercial, those people will be squeezed out of their home, forced to leave in a sense. It's just a matter of time, it's not a matter of, they can stay, they will be squeezed out over time. You know, we say we're, Pleasant Grove is a city of trees, and yet we're building concrete and buildings and stuff, I think we need more green. I, I do agree that if they do put something in there, let's make it a lot of green, you know, oxygen for us, and, and not just a concrete jungle. We want families to get together and be together, there's all kinds of residential property around it, to put something that is a surgical center, even though it might provide some medical benefit, it also has some detriment to that neighborhood, and so I think you need to think very carefully on this issue. It's not just a financial, but it's individual people are being affected. Thank you for your time.
I'm not quite sure what's been said, I had to step out and get a kid. I'm Jalen McClellan, I live just east in the neighborhood, like I said, I don't know what's been said. One of my concerns, we had the road going into where Alpine Pediatrics, Welcome Home Assisted Living is, once that opened up, I noticed a lot more traffic on our street, which is seventeen hundred west. We also have had a brand-new subdivision built to the east of us, right behind us, and to be honest, I've noticed, I haven't noticed extra traffic from that, I do notice it from the professional, I don't know if it's like employees cutting through, I just know that's the difference I've seen, so I'm not too concerned about, like, more homes, because for me and my family, we're big into walking and running and biking, and having a new neighborhood to the east has just increased our walkability in the neighborhood. And I, my opinion is, that would be the same if we were able to keep homes, like, I don't know, I'm just a big proponent of neighborhoods, and I think they're important, and I think we're losing them, so, and again, the walkability is important to me, eleven hundred north is not walkable, as it is right now, there's not even like sidewalk. So, I, to me, I feel like having some residential streets in there, I can't say it wouldn't increase traffic more than professional or it would, I just know from my experience, we haven't noticed any more from the new neighborhood to the east, and I have noticed more from, since they opened up that road, just during the day, obviously. So I guess those are my two big cents that I wanna put in, hopefully I never pick anything, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Greg Larson, I'm one of the developers on it. So, we purchased this land seven years ago, I'm sure everyone remembers, but there were some homes on it, and we got complaints, right? They were homeless in the homes, it was gross and everything, so we tore down the homes, left it bare, then we came to the city council with the idea of assisted living. Everyone hated it, okay, they got rid of it, everyone got up and said how it's, it's gonna ruin, ruin the town and everything, so we said, okay, we'll get rid of it. We left it as bare land, we got complaints, that there were people on the land camping and digging holes and stuff. Like, okay, what does the city want? So we went, what is in their plan? We looked, we called Daniel, he said it's professional office, it's supposed to be professional office in the future. So we go, okay, let's go with professional office. I think we can do a surgical center there, we went, we got, we, we talked to the guys across the street, we said we could probably do a thing for you, we couldn't rezone it, it's in their future plan, it shouldn't be an issue this time. And now we're doing professional office, and again, we're getting bombarded. I, it's, it's hard to have a piece of land that you can't do anything with, and so that's, that's kinda where we're at right now, and where, that's our side of the story. And as far as the, the east goes, if houses come in, they'll either be fences to the back of this neighborhood, or a wall. The thing is with professional office, you have the ability in the regs to not put up a wall if you don't want to. If this owner agrees, and this owner agrees, you don't have to do a wall, so there's an option there. If there's residential, that residential family will have the opportunity to do what they want, it doesn't matter what, what the neighboring one will do. And then if we do professional office, surgical center, there'll be walkways, we'll finish the sidewalks and everything, and it, it's a professional office, it's gotta look nice, it's gotta pass code and everything like that. And the other thing is, we are not residential developers, I know that was brought up, we don't know how to make money off of houses, we, we do commercial, that's, that's all we know. And so that's, that's the reason for, for not going residential. If someone comes in and does residential, they'll do point one-eight acre lots, and they'll gem in as tight as they possibly can, and build walls all around it. But that won't be us, we'll have to sell it if that's the case. If it, if you guys don't pass it, we're, we'll have to get rid of it, so, anyway, nine seconds, I beat the clock, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I see no one coming forward, so we'll now close our public hearing, and bring it back up to the council for further discussion or a motion.
Mayor, I, just a few comments, I mean, it's wonderful to see the open dialogue, thank you residents for speaking your mind and giving different options, opportunities that could be there if, if this development comes in, right, of improving, putting the landscaping in, so I'm, I'm hoping the developers are listening, right, of, of those ideas that are brought up. Like I said before, I mean, there's been many different options brought up for this piece of land, and it's before us again, and so I'm, I'm curious to see how, how we vote.
Just a couple comments on my part, and I, you know, sometimes we get neighborhoods that, and, that are fighting about an issue, and I commend your neighborhood, this has been very civil, very loving, very open, and that's not always the case, and there's some open land, and we're just trying to figure out what the best use for the land is. So I commend the property owners, the neighbors, and the neighborhood. I, I do know that a surgical center hours are probably, they probably go a little bit earlier in the morning, probably seven o'clock, but usually I'm, you know, done by five, so your traffic flow would be in those time periods, which I think is doable, a lot less traffic than if it's homes. I do love the idea of the landscaping, so I hope the developer heard that, make the area more walkable, but I'm in favor of the change. I would like to ask if we could direct some, just some time about the lights that are shining on his house.
Yes, I took no, seventeen of them.
Okay, seventeen house lights, okay.
Anyone else?
Well, it was really quick, I'll just say, there was one more comment, that more green is better, is needed, and I just encourage you to go visit our brand-new park, it's gonna be wonderful, so, we're, we're trying.
So here, here's my comments, and, and, and it's kinda for everybody that's involved in some of the things that have been said. One, if we approve a zone change, we have no authority then to deny a, 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 a plan that conforms with the ordinances. So whether there's a park there, whether they put all asphalt down, we will have no say, and no ability to control that at all. So, I appreciate that the, the residents wanna come forward and say, hey, let's put a park in, all of those things might be really great, but really that, it will be dependent on the developer, 'cause he'll be able to do whatever he wants that's conforming with that use. So whether he puts a fence up, if you say, no, I don't want a fence up, and his potential tenants say, I do want a wall up, guess what, it's his property, he can put a wall up. So, I, I say that because I understand that there is a vision that could work for everybody, but that vision is not before us, and in fact, we don't get a say on that. The only thing that we get a say on is what can be used on this property. And if we change it to professional office, then they can utilize that to the max, they can, they can propose buildings that are in conformance with the setbacks and the height requirements, but they could put as many buildings that conform with that on that piece of property. They can put lights on that piece of property, they can put walls around that piece of property. So, you gotta be ready for that, so, what I'm leaning towards is, when I hear Mr. McClellan and his wife come in here, and Ms. McClellan, and they say, wait a minute, we bought our house because we wanted to be in the middle of a residential neighborhood, and they look at the plan, and that's what it says, I've said this before in other meetings, then for me, it becomes the, the obligation or the responsibility of the applicant to show me why this doesn't materially affect somebody else's expectations that they had when they bought their own property. And that's tough for me, this is a tough call, because I understand the future use that the city said, this might be a nice use in the future of this property. But right now, that's not what the use is zoned as, and we are changing the status quo. And my mind goes to, okay, if we're changing the status quo, and I have an objection for multiple residents, 'cause it's going to materially change their expectations, then it's really hard for me to vote in a way that usurps the expectations they had. And you might say, well, wait a minute, they could've looked at the plan, and so they knew that this could be changed, and that's where the difficulty comes in. Because, hey, I love businesses as much as the next guy that's up here on City Council, our gal. We want businesses, we love businesses in Pleasant Grove, but, but ma'am, when we change and materially alter what a, what a piece of property's going to be used for, that's really difficult. So my legal question, though, maybe Tina, you can help guide me on this, and that is, when we have, and this was before my time, but when we have passed a plan that contemplates a future use, and we have a proposed change in zoning that conforms with our proposed plan of future use, can we deny that change legally, or are we required to follow our plan and allow the change in zone?
So, I'll, I'll answer your question, but before I answer your question, I will address something that you said in your remarks. People are not vested in the zoning that is on their property, when they buy it, it cannot, it can be changed at any time, that's case law. So, the idea that somebody bought a piece of property with the expectation that it was always going to be residential, is not something that would hold up in a lawsuit. The Supreme Courts have already held that you're not vested in, in.
I'm not a judge, so I'm not making a legal determination, I'm just saying, if I'm a resident and that's how I buy something, I'm gonna be pretty pissed off at the, the council if they change it.
Right, I'm just letting you know that the council has the ability to change it, that's what, that's one of your basic legislative functions, is zoning, right? And zone changes are requested all the time, and the city, when we adopted the land use map and said, hey, we think this is a great idea, a, a good place to put professional office, that set the vision for that area. Now, you have the utmost discretion of any decisions that you will ever make in a legislative decision such as a rezon. So your question is, do we have to approve it? The answer's no, but if you do not want to approve it, you would be needing to state some kind of findings of why you don't feel like this rezon request, even though it's in conformance with the general plan, is wise.
And so, so follow-up question to that, so does it have to be a legal reason why we don't approve it? It has to be a legally sufficient and justified reason that would hold up in court for us to denying a zoning change?
Health, safety, and welfare, it has to.
So you said legally we can do it, so, and then you're telling me that I have to say something for my vote, if I were to vote against it, you're saying I have to put something on the record that justifies a no vote? What is?
No, no, if you wanna vote no, you don't have to say one word, either way, you just say no. But if you're going to propose a motion, and, and that's the, the council's decision by a majority vote, then we need to have some, some factual findings behind that, either that that particular request, there's something unique about that request, that it just doesn't fit the plan or the vision, or that it's going to cause some kind of hardship that's, that can't be overcome. I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be a legal one that's found in the code, but it has to be something that's reasonable and arguable in front of a judge in case it was challenged. Does that make sense?
Well, I mean, are we, I mean, again, we're talking legal terms here, and, Mayor, I'm trying to get the. And, Mayor, I'm trying to get the lay of the land here, I think it's an important decision to have a conversation about.
Go ahead.
And so, so are we talking just any kind of rational basis? Does it even rise to the level of that, or is it any basis at all?
I don't know that there's a standard, I don't know that there's a standard set out there. Like you and I know a rational basis, right?
Right.
I don't know that that's been articulated. But again, like I said, a legislative decision is where you have the most discretion. But it can't be arbitrary, it can't be capricious. So there has to be some rational basis for making that decision. And there's no legal, you asked me if it was, it needed to be illegal. Well, in my mind, if you're asking that, then you would have to deny it because it didn't comply with some code. And that's not the case. You don't have to cite to a code to say, I'm not approving this because of code section blah, 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 right? Or because case law says I cannot approve it for this reason.
I understand what you're saying, oh.
Let's, yeah, I'm done, thank you, thank you, Tina.
You know, my feelings here, when this was first brought towards us, to us, it's, for me, it's as simple as, what do owners, what are owners' rights? What are the ownership rights, and what does that entail? And then how does that impact those around them? I was very concerned in the last meeting that, what was this? Needs more batteries. Yeah, that these three homes were going to be in the middle of an island. And.
Just the two homes.
The two homes, yeah. And, well, there's three lots there, one, two, three.
Well, but the third's already in that zone.
That's true, yeah.
Okay.
So, but there's, but there's three homes there. And we've heard from the residents that they're okay with the change. And yet we had other residents that said, we don't like what it does to those residents. Even though those residents said, I'm okay with the change. So, you know, I understand the struggle here between, with these residents and not wanting commercial and not wanting something else, and wanting something different, or want to be involved in the planning or in the costs. Unfortunately, that's not how our republic works. Land ownership rights can determine that. This property is in, is in, is zoned in the master plan as, I want to make sure I say it right.
Professional office.
Professional office. And so that's the master plan. The master plan is that this is to be professional office. We have a, we have a landowner that says, I want to make this a professional office. And if, if we have residents that don't want that to be professional office, my recommendation would be to buy the property. Because that's probably the only way to stop it. Thanks, Mayor.
Sid?
Daniel Kangahi, I think he was.
Daniel, I think you're gonna address where I think I want you to, so anyway.
Yes, I don't know, but you tell me if I answer. So I see my job is just giving you some information for you guys to make the best decision possible. So just to give you an idea, from the code standpoint, the residential use that is existing is more intrusive than the commercial use. For example, just to give you an idea, for all those residents right here, okay, all these residents right here, if the zone stays residential, they can have a 25 feet from the property, a 35 feet home. Which has happened somewhere else, that has caused problems, right? Because they, residential versus residential, there's no barriers, okay? For any of the neighbors, future residential neighbors right here, I cannot require them to do any landscape. Okay, if they want to do, it's the opposite, they want to do concrete, they want to do grass, they want to do, I cannot say, hey, you need to plant X amount of trees. In a residential, that's not possible. In the commercial, it is possible. So it's the opposite. In regards to, so there's a section of the code that has, Carrie mentions, she had a taste of what I do every day, like read the code. There's a portion of the code that says, when you have a professional office next to a residential, then the setback is way bigger, by 10, 15 feet bigger. In the residential, it's smaller, okay? Another thing that it is, is, for example, the other item that was brought, yes. In a residential, you can cram a lot more, for sure. And we're not just talking about, remember, everywhere in the city, you can have a single-family home plus an accessory apartment. So it's not, it's not just a matter of 24, we're talking double that. It could happen like that. And how things are right now, it could double that. Based on that, the traffic, it will be more intense in a residential than in a commercial. Because we're talking about 48 units, okay, about, approximately. So in regards of also of the, how much can they build, total lot coverage? In the PO, it's smaller, okay, it's from 25 to 30 percent. With X amount of, there has to be landscaped. In the residential, we don't have that ability. So in regards to the fence, for example, is, is, in, if I put residential right there, then the neighbor can go, or the new neighbor right here, and put any fence they want, okay, any fence they want. In the PO, it's different. They need to go and talk to the neighbor, and they get to this, the neighbor here gets to decide what he wants right here. So it's more advantageous to the existing neighbor, because the code says, a minimum, right now the code says, a minimum of eight foot, what's the word that I had right here, give me one second, it says, a minimum of eight foot tall fence that is precast. Okay, like kind of like concrete stuff. But if the neighbor says, no, I don't want that, I want something else, then they can work something else there. In a residential, I don't have that right. They can go and do it. So in the commercial, is, if I, based on those items, I can tell you that the commercial is more, is less intrusive, the residential, sorry, the commercial is less intrusive than the residential in regards of setbacks, traffic, fence, lot coverage. Now, that is because it's already written in the code, so that's not an opinion, that's what's written on the code. So that's something to maybe, I don't know if that covers what you were gonna ask me, or. Those are the rules in regards to what's existing versus what is proposed.
Thank you, Daniel, you addressed exactly what I wanted you to, so anyway, Sid.
Just what, this is hard. Because you have a property owner, although he doesn't have a home and he doesn't live there, he still owns property. And he has followed the code, and he's followed Pleasant Grove rules and regulations to try and utilize his property, so he has rights, and so do the people that live there. So it is a hard decision to please, I don't think everyone's gonna be pleased with the decision. I don't know, it's a hard balance, and, I don't know. We're just, we're trying our best to accommodate everyone, and I appreciate you coming out. It helps our decisions when we hear from the public and from the residents because we need that information to make those decisions. So I do appreciate you taking the time to come out tonight. And I hope that we can make the decision that's best for the majority of people, including the landowner. And I do hope if a medical facility goes in, you know, there's green space, and it is a place of hope and healing. And that's all we can do, is our best.
Thank you. Anybody else on the.
Just to get back, I mean, I think that's where you see the difference of any of you attended planning commission. It's a little different than city council, what you see here is because planning commission has bumper rails, per se. They have to stay within the code and regulations. City council, we're a little more open, right, per se? That's why we love when you come in and chat with us and talk with us, and share your concerns. Because like Tina stated, we can kind of talk over some of those issues. And thank you, Daniel, for explaining that, and kind of going over what the pros and cons are in both, so yeah, thanks, Mayor.
I just had one question for Daniel. Do you know when we changed the plan, or if it's always been that this has been professional office?
Yeah, it's been professional office since I started in 2016, it was professional office. I think the change was because professional office, the line used to be right here. So in 2016, so when we reached, to your general, when we changed the general plan, worked on the general plan a couple of years ago, since the line was right here in the middle of this lot, we just moved it to the proper line. But all this land wasn't in a plan in professional office, boss, yes.
Okay, any other questions, council?
I just have one statement. Mr. Johannes Meyer said that he wanted to make sure that we understood that these were people, and these were houses, and that these were families. And I just want to say that that's what keeps us up at night, all the time, every week. And so this does matter to us a lot.
Okay, council, do I have a motion? For ordinance 2025-004.
Mayor, I'll make a motion for approval of ordinance 2025-004 for the zone change from R18, single-family residential zone to the PO, professional office zone located at 1783, 1807, 1841, and 1855 West, 1100 North on. Approximately 7.53 acres in the R18, single-family residential zone.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Jensen, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Lamone. And we'll start out on a roll call vote with Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers.
No.
Councilmember Jensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamone.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. Thank you, that concludes that, we'll now move to our second item on our agenda, 9B. Public hearing consider for ordinance 2025-006 for a zone change for approximately 2.8 acres of land from the neighborhood commercial CN zone to the commercial sales 2, CS2 zone, located at 675 West Drive, Garden Drive. Applicant is Mike Carter, and we'll turn the time back over to Director Cardenas.
Mayor, council, thank you so much. So the second item that I get to present today is.
I don't know if your mic's on there, Daniel.
Pardon? Hello? Yeah, I need to talk to it, yes. Thank you, thank you, boss. So the, this item that I have in front of us again, the second one, is for a rezon 2, okay? So if we go to the staff report that you guys have in your package, and actually, let's take a look at those images. I thought we were rezoning the state of Texas, that just looks like the state of Texas, every time I see that. So the other sort of properties right here is next to our Deer Parks on 600 West. Seeing it from the zoning map, is this property right here, it's in the corner, the corner right here, you guys can see the shape right here, okay? So this lot right there, right now is in the commercial neighborhood, okay, in the commercial neighborhood zone. We just recently approved a site plan right there, it's built, we have Tabitha's Way. And Mike Carter, who represents Tabitha's Way, is the applicant for this rezon. It's also a third-party application, it's from one of the, from one of the property owners, this is not coming from staff. The property is 2.8 acres. And let me tell you a little bit of what's going on and the reason why they're trying to rezon. So as we know, and when we drive right there, we can see a building where Tabitha's Way is, and they have certain spaces for rent, some commercial spaces, right? So what's going on is that every zone has X amount of uses that are permitted in the zone. So every time someone wants to open a business, which, we're open for business, and we welcome our business into our city. But then there's a process, and my staff takes, or staff takes a look at the application, the first thing we see is the use permitted in the zone, okay? So as some of the uses that they have been brought to occupy on that building, they're not permitted in the CN zone, okay? So then the applicant has proposed in the past, and we actually brought it through the process, and brought it in front of you guys and said, hey, let's amend the zone, and let's add new uses to the zone, which we recently did it. But that process, it takes about, sometimes from six weeks to seven, eight weeks. And by the time that it goes through the planning commission, by the time we notice it goes to the planning commission, comes to city council, then the potential renter already found another place, okay? So I understand the situation, what's going on with the property owner. So in trying to, trying to solve this problem, we start throwing some ideas and say, how about we rezon to a zone that is commercial, that allows more uses, that has a bigger rate of uses, okay? We work on this, we talk about, how about if we rezoned into the downtown zone? And then staff says, the reason why that's not feasible is because if we go into a downtown zone, in the downtown zone, we have a specific architectural feature that you're building doesn't comply with it. So let's keep looking into it. And then just kitty corner of here, right, this zone right here that we have, the CS2 zone, okay? So the CS2 zone is where we have a variety of restaurants, we have Macy's, but over there, we also have, I think we have, let me see, offices, and we have people who do nails, and we have different, you have a, the array, is that a word, the array of uses is way bigger in the CS2 zone than in the CN zone. So then the applicant is proposing to rezon this property right there of 2.8 acres, and turn from brown, commercial neighborhood, to the CS2. Again, the difference is in the CN2 zone, the commercial neighborhood, the uses are less restrictive. We're just talking about restaurants, we're just talking about a movie theater, we're just talking about uses that are more like what you would expect in the middle of a neighborhood, however.
You said less restrictive, the CN is more.
More restrictive, thank you, boss. That's why he's my boss, and you just got me in a short leash right there. So, so yeah, it's more, more, sorry, the CN is more restrictive. Less uses are in the brown one than on the pink one. The applicant wants to apply more uses, therefore, he's going, trying to paint this area right here, pink. And a lot, but both are commercial to commercial, just the one allows for more uses, okay? That's what I have, Mayor and council.
Let me just make sure, the CN does not allow for more usage, uses.
It's less.
Has less.
Less uses.
Less uses.
More restrictive.
And it's more, it's what you're proposing is that it's a C.
S2.
S2.
Okay, yes.
Thank you.
Sorry about that, yes.
If I can just say a little, I mean, talking with the applicant, we've, oh, sorry, was there?
No, go, just one more. Counsel?
Yeah, I'm saying, talking with the applicant.
No. Okay, all right.
Sorry, I just want to make a comment, Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
So talking with the applicant, they've had people that have wanted to rent their space and use their space, and it doesn't fit the zone, so they've had to say no. So they've come to us and said, look, we're having trouble with this, we want a little more flexibility in the uses. The answer is the CS2 zone, which is still commercial, just with a little more leeway. Because we don't want vacant buildings necessarily sitting over there. We don't want heavy-duty uses there, we don't want industrial-type stuff. But the CS2, I think, allows the individuals to have a little more opportunity to lease their space.
Can you help us understand what uses?
Yeah, for example, the last one that we brought here to city council, they wanted to do a place that would do like a print shop, for like marketing and stuff like that. That use wasn't included in the CN zone, it was included in the CS2 zone. For example, there's another one that they mentioned, they want to sell tires, like a tire shop. To give you an idea, tire shop is not permitted in the CN zone, it is permitted in the CS2 zone. So those type of uses. In the staff report, actually, I put a matrix with uses, and which ones are permitted on each one of them. And as a take two, I'm gonna say it again in just one sentence, the CN zone is more restrictive, less uses. The CS2 zone is less restrictive with more uses.
So I'm assuming it was a CN zone because it's kind of a buffer zone going into residential, or is that wrong?
No, yes, you're right. It's a CN zone because the proximity to single-family homes, number one. And because this entire project in the brown used to, it was under a development agreement where we were hoping that the developer, the owner of the, the original owner, which was Ico Development, was gonna propose a master plan situation. That's the reason why.
Have you heard from any of the residents that border that orange zone? I mean, I think, you know, any of the, have any of these here?
I haven't, but we may have some right here, correct.
We don't know till we open up the hearing.
Okay, great.
Any other questions for Daniel?
No, I guess my only comment, just quick, well, I'll save, I'll save the talk. Go ahead.
Okay, I think we're good, and I'd just like to, go ahead, Scott.
I'd just say, if we can have the applicant come up and.
Yes.
Before we.
Mike, do you need to come up and clarify anything there? I think Scott did a great job.
My name is Michael Carter, and 3076 North, 550 West, Pleasant Grove. Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and all the work you guys do. Grove. Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and all the work you guys do. So, I mean, I think Daniel did a really good job of explaining it, and also Scott. Basically, we had three businesses. We came before planning commission and council and last October, and we have five spaces to lease, and we came before, went through the process, and it was, I don't know, two and a half, three months, something like that, which is, you know, which is fine. These guys worked really hard on putting everything together, and we ended up having, as Daniel said, there's a, a commercial copying and retail copying and, and printing business and apparel business, as well as a scratch and dent kind of appliance business, where you can get, use appliance, new appliances that were cheaper. And in the process of all the time that it took to do that, they, each of them found something else, and so we started over. We've not had any success finding anybody that fits the uses so far. If we did, they'd, they'd all be in there and they'd all be full. We are very aware, and, you know, the question was brought up about the buffer. I mean, we're aware that we need to be careful with noise, smells, you know, all those kinds of things, and we would definitely be very careful of that. But we're trying to make sure that we don't waste you guys' time, maybe we don't do this over and over and over again, trying to get special uses and then, you know, and then not have it come to fruition by having more uses that we can choose from. And so that's our purpose in being here tonight and asking for the change. Any questions that I can answer for anybody?
Questions, right. Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I would like to open up the public hearing and invite anybody to come forward and address the council this time.
Here's, here's my feeling. Maybe I'll even do a mic drop.
Okay. Wait, we haven't, we haven't...
Is it, we haven't closed it?
We haven't closed it. We just opened it up.
No, somebody's coming.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead.
The public hearing and...
Yes.
And you can't speak during...
I won't speak.
Hi, my name's Jason Bellnapp. I live just on the other side of the wall of this proposal. You know, I was here when they were proposing Tabitha's Way and all that, and I was like, okay, you know, it's for a good cause. Let's go for it. And every garbage day at four A M., I regret that decision because I get woken up. They're not quiet about it. In fact, I feel for these guys that are gonna, that just won their proposal, that that same thing's going to happen to them, because, anyway. So noise is going to be a big factor, even though, oh, we'll try and mitigate it. You know, I heard smells from restaurants or whatever comes in there. I don't know how you put a limit on smells because they tend to travel wherever they want. You know, you get off the Pleasant Grove exit, you can smell the lovely smell that's out there, and it, the wind blows right, it's right there. You know, I don't know what kind of businesses are coming in, restaurants, tire shops, whatever. Noise is definitely going to be a factor. You know, during the other one I did here, yeah, hours are different. Most of that's during the day, perhaps, yes. The tire shops I know tend to collect a lot of garbage out and about, which attract rodents and everything else, and my cat just died, so I'd have to get another one. Already, we've got a park that's not a hundred percent finished yet, just down the street, and traffic is bad already. It was before, and now it's even more. There was a lady that said, yeah, let's, or maybe it was you, said, hey, let's go, I'll meet at the park. And I said, please walk, because there's a lot of cars already. And there was a picture that, I can't remember your name.
Daniel?
He had an aerial of Macy's, and that's a not busy day where that aerial was taken. You can see lots of parking spots. But even if you took that many cars and put them over there, and they're coming in and out of that road, it's just going to add that much more. And I think, tell me that again?
Daniel?
Daniel, sorry. I'm bad with names. I barely remember my own. So Daniel said something that kind of caught my attention about commercial traffic versus residential traffic. And where there's residential, where a lot of residential, you're going to have more traffic than you would if it was zoned commercial, right? And so I don't know what commercial, this zoning versus open more with more retail shops, sounds like that's going to be even more traffic than, say, if it just stayed commercial like it is. So that's a lot of what I have to, we've already noticed even with the park, like, more and more people that we have no idea who they are, just walking our streets. And I even live in a horseshoe, which is not a main through road. I wish that was longer, but anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
John Javance Meyer. This is right over where I live, and my biggest concern would be traffic. I just want to see, has there been a traffic study? Obviously, the park is there. It's getting traction. More and more people are going there. Sixth West is, was already busy enough. In fact, I take that road all the time to and from work, and it's only going to get worse. Has there been any discussion about widening that road, doing anything? If you do, keep adding more commercial in that area, it's going to keep getting worse and worse and worse. And so my biggest concern is the traffic that all of this is going to create on that road, and has a good plan been made to address that? If not, I would certainly encourage you to plan accordingly and see what can be done to divert traffic, widen the road, or something like that. I know it's going to affect a lot of people in that neighborhood where I live in, which is just north of kind of that area there. And I've talked to other neighbors, and they're also concerned about the impact of the traffic and their ability to get in and out of their neighborhood. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Michelle Bellnapp, belonged to that guy back there. We live right across the wall, and we were all for Tabitha's Way to come in first because it seemed like the best option. We definitely didn't want anything being really high that people could look down into our yard. And we're out there a lot. We entertain a lot. But one thing that I have noticed since it's gone in that makes me hesitate to have it changed is foot traffic. We have a lot more people walking up and down along our wall. I have people throwing things into our backyard all the time. I'm home all day, so I see a lot. My desk is up against the south-facing window, so I do get to look right there. And we have kids trying to climb the wall. They're spray painting it. They're hanging out behind Tabitha's Way. At night, we can see them. I live two doors down from Officer Green, so he gets a lot of, hey, could you take a look over the walls from me? The lights are different. The lights from the park are now in the front of our house. We can see them from the front of our house, and the back. Plus, if you live over there or you drive over there, trying to get into my neighborhood at any time of school, getting out, or like right now, spring break, just finished, that was a nightmare, just to get into our street alone. I know that the last time we spoke about Tabitha's Way, the railroad tracks were discussed as something that can't be traversed with a street or an entrance or an exit. That means that that one entrance now becomes the sole way to get into those buildings and out, which is a traffic backup. I don't see how widening the street or how it would be widened with the way the park's going in. That's just going to cut into somebody's front yard. That's going to take part of their land. We have trees that line the fence, which I love. Please don't take them in any situation, that kind of block our yard. But I have noticed that a lot of the kids are climbing those trees, and I don't know if it's the parents are going into Tabitha's Way or where they're coming from. It's mostly younger kids. They're running out in that field. They're throwing things into our backyard. Again, like I said, we have people yelling to us. If we're out there and we have music on, we've got a patio that has music, and we've never had complaints, but I know we will once new businesses come in, if they're retail. The retail side of it concerns me because that whole purpose is to bring more people there. I, like I said, I stay home. I'm, I see this. I've seen the change just from Tabitha's Way, and that's kitty corner to me. So that, those would be my concerns that I hope would be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Now close our public hearing, bring it back to council for further discussion. Bob. You're now open.
Well, thanks for here. And I apologize for being out of order. You know, here's, here's our problem. We've, we've talked about this property for as long as I've been on the council, and for many years probably before that. The master plan calls for a road to be, come across these tracks and then up here, here, and then tie into right here somewhere, depending upon landowner, landowner agreements. If, if the landowner of this property right here, which we're, which we're talking about, is not able to lease that property, we are going to be stuck with the current owner of some of that with homes. And they're going to put homes in there. And they're going to want to put homes in there. They've come to us at least twice, and we've said no to multi-unit housing developments in there, which is the current owner. The current owner has, it's just not zoned right. So in my opinion, this actually helps the landowner. It helps the residents. It helps the city, because if we put in, I don't know, a hundred units in there, whatever, whatever that would be, you want to talk about traffic and problems? It's going to be, it's going to be a mess. So I am in favor of allowing more uses in there, like it would be across the street, so that, that the current landowner of that property can rent, rent his property, and, and we can further stay off more multi-unit housing in that area.
Anyone else, counsel?
Yeah, I just want to say, so I really appreciate, you know, the Bellnapps and John, and I really appreciate you voicing your concerns. Part of the issue with, with this is that it's already commercial. And so, Daniel, thank you for providing this list, and it's in the agenda. You can look online. And right now, in the C N zone, a lot of the things that were expressed as concerns are already allowed, and retail's already allowed, and most retail is already allowed. And a lot of professional services are allowed, and, you know, apparel retail and repair and automobile car washes, and all of these things would be allowed there. And so when I look at the list of things that are not allowed right now, but would be allowed under a C S two zone, I don't see anything that creates more of a nuisance than what's already allowed here. Is it different? Yes. It might be different than what's allowed, but I just don't see something here that says, oh, man, they're going to be manufacturing, you know, big cement blocks here. That's not allowed. This is already zoned retail, and again, if, 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 if I heard something that I was like, okay, yep, going from a C N to a C S two, that would definitely change and make that a problem like the Bellnapps have mentioned, I would, I would tend to vote no. But looking at the uses for C S two, I think it's still pretty appropriate for the space, and it doesn't add any additional chance of nuisance as far as smells and noises and people coming in. It's already zoned to be retail and trying to get people there, and I'd rather have it available for more uses. If I thought I saw something on this list, and maybe I'm missing something if the rest of the councils looked at it, but if I thought I saw something on this list that was overly, you know, cumbersome for this zone, I might, I might feel differently. But looking at the list, I think that it's, it's good. It's a, it'll be good to have that full rather than vacant, and I don't think there's any uses in here that would be out of place, so.
I think there might be a couple of things that we could do to mitigate some of the hardship for the residents, and that would be, is there any possibility we can have trash not removed at four A M.?
Right.
And that is, that is citywide, because I also have a dumpster at, that's getting dumped near my home at four A M.
No, so we, we've had complaints in the past in different places in the city, and we generally will call whoever the, because the commercial stuff is not city.
Correct.
They, they can have Waste Management, Republic Services, ACE disposal, but we just, if we know who the carrier is, we tell them, I can't remember, seven A M., whatever it is, that they're not allowed to come at four A M. and wake people up.
Yeah.
That, that shouldn't be allowed. And so if we don't, it's, and I appreciate him saying something because...
Yep.
Yeah.
Now we can make a note, make a phone call and see what we can do to...
Yeah.
Have them change their schedule.
Well, and also, can we, and this was the previous conversation too, with the previous zone, is the lights aimed from buildings to homes? And I know that we can mitigate those.
Well, they were referring to lights in the park, I think.
Well...
No, it was, no, it was for the...
The previous item, right?
Yes.
The previous item.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, those type of things, we just need to be very cooperative with our residents on. And we, and we are, I think.
And we want to help, but we just don't know if, we can't help unless we know. So we appreciate knowing.
Anything else, counsel? I have one thing, I, it was brought up a couple of different times. In fact, Neil, why don't you come forward and tell them what we have in mind for six, traffic-wise, and what our plan is? Or mag project to what was, what's going to be happening in the next few weeks?
Well, I don't know that it's happening in the next few weeks, mayor.
Weeks can mean a long time.
I don't know what kind of weeks you're looking at, but there must be different than mine.
About road closures and stuff.
Oh, okay.
But also moving people through that area.
So, so we've done a lot of studying of this intersection in this area of Center Street and six hundred west, and we brought all sorts of concepts, and we've, we, we looked at anything from even putting a cul-de-sac right here and dead-ending that. We've got, we did all sorts of traffic counts to determine what this intersection ought to look like. And ultimately, in some form, we don't have engineered drawings, but this, this area right here with this major intersection that you're seeing congested today, this is down to one lane today. This is a mess right now, today. No doubt about it, the state. And so any time...
And that's, that's a state project.
That is a state project, one hundred percent. And so in order to help intersections, you move them away from each other. So bringing this road down ultimately up here and touching and getting as far away from State Street and teeing that into Center Street is what we have planned over the next few years. And, and so those details are still a long ways out. Those, those are just a, a plan set buried underneath some areas of my desk right now.
Neil, I think what the mayor was referring to is Cook Family.
So in order to, to, to build what we need for this road right here, that we're, we're widening it right now, the curb is in place. There's a whole bunch of barrels along the way here. We got to put a new water line in, a new storm drain line, and we got to blow this intersection up just a little bit. And so we've got to close this intersection here to route people all the way up and around to eight hundred north entrance to the park, because this entrance is going to be closed for about three weeks. This was all going to be in my director's report, so it's not, it's not lost effort here. But this, this will be closed. We, we have to close it all the way out here so that people don't come to this spot and say, oh, how do I turn around? And so...
So, Neil, just to make sure I understand.
Yeah.
So, so getting into Tabitha's Way is not going to be a problem from, from state, right?
That's correct. That's correct. It will be a local business access only. We just don't want...
Water gardens.
A delivery truck or something to inadvertently try to go north here. So that detour is going to come clear up and over here and then back down.
But Neil, you're referring to access to the park.
That's correct.
Okay, sorry.
People can come down four hundred north, right, if they need to...
This will be blocked right here for about a week because there's a couple of storm drain crossings and some water work that we need to do as part of our job.
But the, the... But the, the, the north, the north access to the park will be available. Because right now, the north parks, north park access is not available.
That's correct. Starting Monday, that, that access point will be available.
Okay.
He laying asphalt?
Yeah, it's probably complete about right now.
So access to Tabitha's Way and Megaplex and
That'll be local.
And Lion, uh, not Lions, uh, Eagles.
Yeah.
Eagles, that's all gonna be fine.
That, that will be allowed on a local basis, but a hard stop right there.
Okay.
And then we'll have to keep this open coming down this way to get these folks access right here. Then once we are able to move that hard stop right at the intersection, we'll have to move that hard stop maybe right up there so that we can route people up and around through Fourth North. So we've got some, some summer work ahead of us. So, any other questions about that access and future roadway plans?
Thank you, Neil.
Yep.
Okay, well, back to our thing. That, I think that answers some questions, and, and, and our, our whole plan is not to widen 600 West anymore than it is right now with this new construction. So, so council, ask for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2025-006 for a zone change on approximately 2.8 acres of land from the neighborhood commercial zone to the commercial cells 2 zone located at 675 West Garden Drive.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jensen. Do I set, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Anderson. And we will start off with a roll call vote with Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers.
Yes.
Councilmember Jensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamone.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, we'll now move on to our 10A, our action items ready for vote this evening. And we'll move to 10A to consider for adoption Resolution 2025-011, authorizing the mayor to sign an amended public utility easement in favor of Enbridge Gas doing business as Dominion Energy for the construction, reconstruction, operation, and maintenance, repair, and replacement, enlargement, and removal of underground natural gas utility lines on or across under property owned by Pleasant Grove City, located approximately 70 South, 100 East, Pleasant Grove, Utah, providing for an effective date. We'll turn the time over to our general counsel.
Mayor and council, this is basically a housekeeping item. We previously granted a public utility easement for this piece of property for the new development that Drew Armstrong is developing on Main Street. And the legal description was inaccurate. It needed to be moved over a few feet. And so you can see the new drawing of where it actually needs to go. So this is just a correction so that we can correct the legal description for the easement.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for council?
Nope.
Not? Ask for a motion.
Mayor, make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2025-011 as read.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Anderson, a second by Councilmember Lamone. And we will start out this time with Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamone.
Yes.
Councilmember Jensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Thank you. Passes unanimously. Now move on to 10B, Consider for Adoption Resolution 2025-012, authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal cooperative agreement between Utah County and Pleasant Grove City for the administration of the 2025 municipal elections. And the presentation is back to our general counsel.
Mayor and council, the interlocal agreement, or the agreement, yeah, the interlocal agreement between the county and the city with regard to running the municipal elections this year in 2025. Several years ago, the city made the decision that it was more cost-effective and efficient to have the county be in charge of running the actual nuts and bolts of our municipal elections. It relieved a lot of pressure from our city staff and ensured that these elections were run on a consistent basis. So this agreement is between the county and us, and it just basically says what their services will entail for both the primary and the general election. And the costs are on the exhibit. I'm trying to remember. It's a little over $100,000 for both of them, and the fee is based on the number of voters that they anticipate. Active voters, 20,198. So active voters times $2.75 per voter, per election, is $55,544.50 for the primary, and the same amount for the general election. So the total cost to the city is $111,000.89, 1,000, 111,089 dollars. Do you have any questions?
Questions, council? No, thank you. Ask for a motion on 25-012.
Mayor, I make a motion for adoption of Resolution 2025-12, as read by you.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Jensen, a second by Councilmember Lamone. And we will start out with Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers.
Yes.
Councilmember Jensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamone.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Good, passes. And we'll now move on to 10C. Consider for Adoption Resolution 2025-013, amending the personnel policies and procedures previously approved by the city council, specifically amending section X, 16 Leaves of Absence subsection 3 Holiday Leave by amending subsection B, Juneteenth observance, and amending section benefits adopting section 7 Cell Phone Reimbursement Policy.
Is that 15?
It's 14.
14, yeah.
14, okay. Providing for an effective date.
And I, I apologize for sometimes having very long short titles. But just so you know, I'm trying to comply with the Open and Public Meetings Act, because that's what gets published on the agenda. And so I'm trying to make sure that the public has a, a, an understanding of what we're considering.
That's good.
But are we required to use Roman numerals?
Yes, we are required.
We are required because that's how our policy manual is currently drafted.
Well, I had to go back to my Olympic days.
Is that, is that something that can be changed?
Wait, what Super Bowl is that?
Well, if we wanna change the whole policy manual and renumber it.
Yeah.
But that's how it is right now.
I mean, if we could, that might make it easier going forward.
And
I like Roman numerals.
Steve.
I just have to remember them.
Can we use it like old Gothic?
Okay, back on subject. We are proposing that the mayor and council approve an amendment to our, two amendments to our policy manual. The first one is, is with regard to the observance of the Juneteenth holiday. If you'll recall, a year or two ago, the state decided to observe Juneteenth. And we had a provision in our, in our policy manual for when that would be observed. The state has come out and, and decided how they were going to observe it. So we have decided to follow the state so that we are consistent. And it's a little bit clunky in terms of figuring out when we are going to observe it. But you can just rest assured that it will always be on a Monday, and it will either be the Monday before the 19th, or the Monday after the 19th. Or if Monday is the 19th, it will be on the 19th. So. The second one is instigated from our HR director and our finance director. They have been approached on several occasions with regard to the question of when or when we do not reimburse city employees for the use of their personal cell phones for city business. And in the past, we've had just one general amount, and it was normally reserved for executive staff with a number of minor exceptions for employees who have to use their phones quite a bit. But there wasn't a policy or a criteria established. So we did a, a survey and compared several other cities' cellphone policies and came up with this one. It basically says that an employee can either be designated as someone who qualifies for a city-owned cellphone, which is primarily public safety and public works. Or the other option is to be reimbursed for your cellphone, your personal cellphone use on city business. And we have developed three tier, tiers. And these tiers will be documented and determined with the department heads in conjunction with HR director. Level one is some interaction with the public and other employees while out of the office. Some use of the cellphone after business hours, that employee would be getting $20 per month. Level two is extensive interaction with the public and other employees via phone, text, and email during and after regular business hours, and that level would get $45. Level three is the city administrator, directors, and executive staff, and they would get $70 per month. And there are other criteria that are listed in the policy. If you have any questions. It does make clear that even though we are reimbursing for personal cellphone use, we are not responsible for lost, stolen, or damaged cell phones. And we prohibit the use of a personal or city-issued cellphone while operating any moving mode of vehicle, and reminding the employees that their devices, whether they're personal or city-owned, if they contain information with regard to city business, they may be subject to grandma. And that we reserve the right to monitor electronic devices used by employees after notice for compliance with this policy. Any questions? It's basically to establish a criteria and a uniform policy in regards to using personal cell phones for city business. We already have had in place for a number of years the city-owned cellphone policy. But we have a number of departments who don't wanna carry two phones. They just wanna carry their personal phone, but they still use it for city business.
And Tina, is this, is this a reimbursement?
It's a reimbursement.
Not a cellphone plan?
No, it's not a plan.
It's a reimbursement policy, and it's only based upon what criteria?
The uses, how, how much you use it. And we do have
So it's not based on title?
No.
Okay.
It's based on your, your city use of
Your city use of your phone. The only one that's based on title is the top tier, and that would be executive level.
I mean, what we found, Public Works is a good example. I mean, they're out in the field. They need to talk to somebody. They're using their own personal cell phones. The city should be covering some of that cost. So our option is, we can put them on a cellphone plan, and now they're gonna have a city cellphone, and they're gonna have their personal cellphone. We think the better path is, they're gonna have their own personal cellphone. We're gonna reimburse, reimburse them for a portion of time, essentially, so that we feel okay that we can call these guys and say, hey, we need you somewhere or something on their personal cellphone.
No, this is, I mean, I, I deal with this in business all the time. And so, and so are we cutting our current cellphone plan?
So currently, there are, as I mentioned, Public Safety and Public Works who have their own cellphone plans with city-issued phones. And it's my recommendation that Public Safety, for sure, still maintain that. You don't want your personal cellphone number out
I agree.
in, in the public. And that's actually protected under grandma as well, so you wanna keep that delineation clear. This is mostly for the other people, like parks workers, cemetery workers, administration. There are a number of workers like Jody, the utility billing clerk, who uses her own personal cellphone for city business quite frequently. So this is for people mostly outside of Public Works and the Public Safety Departments.
And has this been budgeted, is this in the new budget?
Yeah, I mean, I, we, we've already been doing this in a sense, in, in so many ways. We just needed a formalized policy. So the financial implications could be fairly minimal.
Great, thank you.
Do, do the employees that get reimbursed sign some sort of an agreement acknowledging the policy?
There's a form that I've developed that acknowledges the policy, and also it will, it will designate which level they are, and it'll be signed by their department head and HR.
And it's a monthly reimbursement that they have, that they have to apply for every month.
Well, no, we will, we will designate how much that job description would be using their phone. And it's a one-time designation, and it will be added to the payroll once a month. And then if something changes, it's up to the department head to monitor that. If, if an employee changes job duties and they no longer use their phone, then their manager should be saying, hey, you don't qualify for cellphone reimbursement anymore.
Any other questions? Anything else, Tina?
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay, ask for a motion on Resolution 2025-013.
I make the motion that we approve Resolution as read by the mayor, including the Roman numerals as read as well. That we approve the motion.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Lamone, and a second by Councilmember Jensen. And we will start with Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Jensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamone.
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Mayor, I, I need to go right now. I'm sorry. I thought we, we might be done, and so I, I need to go up in Salt Lake, that's okay?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
We all thought it would be done. So, especially Wendy. Well, we'll move on to our next item here. We're knocking them right up. 10D, to consider for awarding staker parson companies doing business as staker parson materials and construction, the 500 East Reconstruction from 200 South to 1100 North Project with a base bid price of $587,128.35, authorizing the mayor to sign a notice of award and a notice to proceed and the agreement. Director?
Mayor and council, thank you. This is an opportunity to celebrate a large project. It's a $600,000. There's a key word there, base bid. It's gonna cost a million bucks to do this road. And we have budgeted a million bucks, and the base bid includes all the base items. And what we've added are some additive alternatives. So when we find things underneath the asphalt that, that require us to dig a little bit more out or add a little bit more, we have budget to do that, to get the job done right. So we have, again, we built that into the budget and into the plans. We have bid, bidded it competitively and got great bids back. So we recommend awarding it to staker persons.
Any other questions for the director?
No.
Love that.
No, ask for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to award hall engineering
No.
Oh, someone, sorry, I read the wrong line. Staker, Staker Parson Companies DBA Staker Parson Material and Construction, the 500 East Reconstruction, 200 South to 1100 North Project with a base bid of $587,128, and authorize the mayor to sign a notice of award, notice to proceed, and the agreement.
A motion by Councilmember Williams. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Anderson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And we'll move on down to 10E, to consider for awarding hall engineering and construction the Murdoch Drive, 1500 East to 600 East Waterline and Roadway Reconstruction Project with a base bid price of $597,320, and authorizing the mayor to sign a notice to award, notice to proceed, and the agreement. Director?
Thanks, Mayor and council. I know we've been here, but I wanted to add a couple of thoughts here, too. This is, that property that sent us that message said this, my home has been flooding for 30 years. And we went and looked at this, and this is another opportunity we had to take care of things because we have money in the budget to take care of it. So we're gonna put a new water line underneath the asphalt that we play, we, we place. And we're gonna fix some curb and elevations to make it so that resident doesn't have flooding in front of her home anymore. I also wanna point to the fact that we received seven different qualified bids. One was really high, and we asked the contractor why so high. And I'll try to articulate this in the best way I can, is they said, well, I have to factor in the Britton factor. Okay? And, and you might think, well, God, what, is Britton hard to work with? And, and I've advised Britton to wear that with a badge And I've advised Britton to wear that with a badge of honor, because contractors bid a project...
Hey, Tamara, hold on. Tamara, are you leaving? Scott, will you go talk to Tamara Naylor about the things that we've talked about?
I gave her my direct line, she'll call me tomorrow.
Okay, okay, thank you. Sorry.
No, no. And so we bid a...
The Britton factor.
The Britton factor. We bid a set of projects with a thick set of plans and specifications. And so when we build it, we expect the contractor to build it with the right amount of asphalt, with the right slope on the pipe, with the right amount compaction. And none of that slips past Britton in the pay requests and all of the things, so you can be assured that we're getting what we pay for. And I think that the fact that some people find that difficult is telling, and the fact that we do have contractors willing to bid again and again, that know how to work with us and do the right work, is also telling that we're on the right path. So with that, you know, we've received this bid, and we recommend that we award the project.
Okay, any questions for the director?
Nope.
Okay, ask for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to consider, to award hall engineering and construction the Murdoch Drive, 1500 East to 1600 East waterline and roadway reconstruction project with a base bid price of five hundred and ninety-seven dollars, three hundred and twenty dollars, and authorize the mayor to sign the notice of award, notice to proceed, and the agreement.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Rogers, a second by Councilmember Jensen, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, thank you. Move down to 10, thank you, Director, and we'll have another director address us now on 10F, consider for proclamation declaring April 24, 2025 as Arbor Day. Director Giles.
This one should take at least a half hour. Right, Dion?
Please, Dion.
I'm not as good as Neil. I can't waste time, I'm just kidding. Mayor and council, this year, the Beautification Commission and the Parks Department decided to do our Arbor Day celebration, April 24, Thursday, at 8:00 AM at Hill Park. And yeah, that's kind of plant a couple of trees up there and have it wrapped up.
Have we done other parks, or is it always just Hill Park, or what?
We, the last, we've done Discovery, last year it was Mahogany, or Manila Creek. Yeah, we've done pretty much every park, other than Veterans, I believe, because the older parks we haven't done. Their trees are pretty well established.
Could you give us the specifications on all those trees and where they came from?
At least one and a quarter, or one and a half inch caliber. We haven't decided the trees.
You're good, you're good.
Not Sycamore, I'm assuming.
Any other questions for? No.
But I'd like to make a...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is this something that we make a motion on?
Would you give me a motion here?
I would like to make a motion that we proclaim April 24 as Arbor Day.
We have a motion for Councilmember Anderson, do I have a second to that motion?
Go ahead.
Councilmember Rogers, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, thank you. Okay, our last one, action item ready for vote this evening, is Resolution Number 2025-014, a resolution of the governing body of Pleasant Grove City, authorizing the mayor to sign a sales agreement with Clark Shane Johnston for 540 square feet of property located approximately 180 north, 900 east, Pleasant Grove, Utah, Utah County, providing for an effective date.
Can I ask a question really quick? Is this Clark right back here? You've been so patient with me.
And he has sat here for... For five hundred, no, for 540 feet. Is this clearly your first city council meeting?
Best for last. This is a really important 540 square feet.
So, I mean, technically, we have at number seven on our agenda committee appointments. I think we kind of missed that one. We'll do better next time to make sure that gets done, so that somebody will have to sit through our whole meeting to be appointed to a committee.
Wait, so he's...
Wait, he's...
No, he's...
Oh, sorry.
He's a sales purchase.
Oh, sorry, okay.
He's not waiting for a committee.
But while we have him, let's turn him into a board member.
Scott, he'll suffer jet lag from his...
Okay, Mayor and council, the city was approached by Mr. Johnston. He is developing a very small one-lot subdivision, and he needed some property from the city. I don't know if you can tell, but this is the water tank, the Monson Water Tanks, just below the canal trail. And the address is 850 East, approximately 100 north, 900 east in that block area. And the little circle, the 540 square feet, and the little triangle is what he's purchasing from us. He's paying fifteen dollars a square foot for a total of eight thousand, one hundred dollars. Staff determined that that piece of property was not essential to our use of the water tank property, and that it could be declared surplus. The resolution does that. Since it was such a small square footage, I didn't go through the hassle of doing a separate surplus item. There are some conditions contained in the sales agreement that you can read that community development and engineering have placed on before the sale closes, one of which is that he will submit the one-lot subdivision plat, that he will pay for the legal description for the quitclaim deed, and that he will also build a retaining wall or something between the property. Do you have any questions?
No. Okay, thank you. Oh, yes, can you come forward?
I think you've earned the right.
The property you...
Sure.
We can give you a pointer if you want.
You just, yeah, just...
So when we were building this home, we were originally going to put a...
You need to be on a mic. You gotta be on a mic.
And you can use this.
All right. So when we were building this home, we were working with the previous engineer, Marty, at the time, and the city owns all this property up here, it's the water tanks. The original idea was to put a turnaround right here, but Pleasant Grove City had said, hey, that's going to take some time to think through it. We had to move a couple of telephone poles, we'd have to take out part of the property and put new gates up, and we estimated it'd be around fifty thousand dollars cost, and we thought, whoo, we don't want to spend a year trying to figure out all that. So then the thought was, okay, last second, let's put a turnaround, or rather, yeah, turnaround in the middle of the street instead of at the end, which was half of my property, half of a neighbor's property, which made us change the design of our home to move it down to one-car garage. And then the city said, okay, we'll put some kind of garage back here, so that you're in conforming use, having two covered parking spots, because that's what code is now, you have to have at least two covered parking. So to accommodate the turnaround here, we reduced down to a single-car garage, and then we said, in the future, we'll build another garage here to allow us to have two covered parkings. And at that time, Marty's thought, well, so you can get into your garage without having to, you know, so you can turn around, it would make sense to use this piece of property, but it would have taken another six months or so to go through the council, to get everything set. And we thought, we want to hurry and build a home before interest rates increase. Luckily, we were able to build it two months before the interest rates increased, so we thought, let's just revisit this at a later time. And so that's where we are today. And just to give you a quick picture of this ugly area...
Oh, yeah.
It's a fun, ugly area that you see trees growing through the...
I've got the visual up, just from a map, to see where we were at. So you've...
So there was trees that have been growing through the fence line, because what happened was, there used to be private irrigation that ran through here, and it ran through here, that was owned by Purple City, and that was used by two residents in Pleasant Grove. Marty had, previous city engineer, had us re-pipe that. So we re-piped that to go right through here, away from that area. So now that area isn't used for anything, and it's had all this kind of garbage trees that have grown through the fence line, and the fence is falling apart, as you can see. And the city workers, they have an open gate right here, they open every day, about ten times a day, and they curse at that thing every day, because they're trying to ram it through trees and things to open that gate up. And so Drew, who's over the water department, he was cursing out there one day, said, you know, I've been meaning to bring this to the city again. And he said, let's work together on something here, so that my guys aren't cursing friendly curse words, opening this gate up, and that we could do something to where I would build a retainer wall right here, about a two-foot retainer wall, because right now the ground is about two feet higher, and all the dirt is sloughing off into my property when it rains. So I would take down the old gate, build a retainer wall here, so that that dirt doesn't come onto our property, and then the idea would be to put up a new gate, or rather, new fence, and make it a little bit more pleasant, and something to where the city's not using this area right now. It's just kind of trees that are growing through, and kind of a nuisance for everyone right now, so...
Cool.
Long story, but...
Wonderful.
Love it.
Maybe we can put a name on the gate, like Drew's Gate, I don't know.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Wait, is this Nate Lloyd's old neighborhood?
It is, in fact, we bought it from the Lloyds.
Nate's, oh.
Yeah, so...
Gosh, I've cursed at that fence. Well done, thank you.
Thanks.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-014, authorizing the mayor to sign a sales agreement with Clark Shane Johnston for 540 square feet of property located approximately 180 north and 900 east in Pleasant Grove, and providing for an effective date.
We have a motion by Councilmember Williams, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Anderson, and we will start with Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Jensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
That passes unanimously. That concludes all of our action items this evening, and so now we are going to shift back to the final discussion on our budget. Is that correct?
Before you start publicly on record, there was a comment made in the open session about a five-hundred-thousand-dollar... Okay.
I got it in my notes here.
Thank you.
Before I do, let me address my punchiness. I just cracked open my second Mountain Dew.
May want three.
We are past eight o'clock. This reminds me of the old days, when we'd go to 10, 11, 12.
Yes.
So the fact that eight o'clock feels like a late meeting...
We didn't start at four, we started at six. Oh, seven.
Just, I want you to clarify, those old days didn't include this, Mayor?
No, it didn't.
Okay.
No, it didn't. So, yeah, Tina likes to remind me, we do start earlier, but anyway, I apologize for, I, we, on our agenda in two weeks, we do have a couple commission appointments. That's why I was thinking that, and I thought, oh my gosh, we've had him sitting here the whole time.
I know, that would have been horrible.
And I inadvertently chucked Wendy under the bus, saying, I think she missed it on the agenda, but Wendy, you're doing a great job, okay?
Okay, so we didn't even hear that under the bus. We were busy talking to him.
No, it was a subtle, but Wendy's also leaving for Cedar City tonight for her conference, and we were hoping to get her out of here sooner rather than later, but here we are.
Talk budget when I'm here, then.
What's that?
If you want to get out fast, then you shouldn't bring up the budget.
And we're fine, we can talk all night. All right, so there was kind of three comments made by a resident who was here, I think, just left, and my intention was to corner her and say, hey, I'm willing, we're willing to sit down with any resident that has questions specific to what's going on, to come to a city council and say, hey, I want you to address this, is probably not the proper forum for us to have a discussion on some of that. Tina snagged her, and there's going to be an interaction. So one of the comments was, is that we were five-hundred-thousand dollars over budget. I'm not exactly sure where that came from. I think she was referring to three weeks ago, when we went through our budget. But in, I just want to address, in the last, well, ever since I've been here, and this isn't a credit to me, this is a credit to the people that run our finance and the department heads who spend the money. We've turned a surplus every year. Last year's surplus was probably over two million dollars. Year before that, it was over two million dollars. So financially speaking, when we end a budget year, we have done a good job. Denise Roy leads the way for our city financially, and she does a really good job. And because of that, we're on firm financial footing. Now, some people might disagree how we're spending the money, on what projects and whatnot, and that's fine, that's up for public discussion. The best I can come up with is last, three weeks ago, when we were talking about the one-pager...
Yes.
And we had our expenses versus the revenues, and I think that number was out of balance. I don't remember if it was five-hundred thousand.
And it normally is.
Oh, it always is. It always is, up until we adopt our budget. I mean, and that's because we're required to adopt a balanced budget. We can't adopt a budget. But keep in mind, we're adopting a budget, that's just a path on how we're going to spend the money. That's not a reflection of how the money is spent when the year's over.
And we also did not have the sales tax revenue and/or the property tax number.
I mean, we did, but every month we get more information, it makes us easier to do that, but we always start in a certain position, and we work our way to balance. What you saw in the one-pager today was balanced.
Right.
Is there going to be something that comes up between now and when we adopt the final budget that might mess with that a little bit, maybe, but we think we kind of have it where we need to be.
I guess, and my, thank you, Scott. I think my request, and maybe Tina, if you'll get back with us, once you get with that resident, it's things like that that really grows like wildfire sometimes.
Well, and that's why I was, I wanted it to be addressed while the room was full.
Yeah, I did, too, but...
And if you, if we get into that, again, we don't want to have a debate between council and somebody...
No, I understand, but I want a clarification.
If they sit down, and Mayor, and usually, I just need to be better, I can jump in and say, hey, Mayor, give me 30 seconds, and I can clarify what's going on.
Yes.
And so you're right, I think if we do have a room full of people, I mean, these meetings are recorded, they're streamed, and people might be watching this four days later, saying, well, you know, what about that five-hundred thousand? Well, if they stick with our meeting through two hours, then they'll find that there's an answer.
Which they probably won't.
Probably won't. It's a good point, okay. So two other things that were brought up, she used the term fluffy, okay. I got to be careful about the words I use, because the words I use mean something, and they matter. And that was the word I used three weeks ago in regards to our PR position, they were going to handle some of the fluffy stuff. Well, what I mean by that is what I would call more promotional stuff, to say, here's what we're doing as a city, and these are things, these are not hardcore news, these are not hardcore numbers.
These are events, these are happenings.
We beat you up on the work session on that.
Yeah, yeah, and so obviously, obviously, it's not just the council and Mayor sitting up here that's confused on the PR. Again, this is my communication struggle, and we just had a resident point that out. So I just, fluffy is a poor choice of words, it should be more promotional, and that was the terminology I used today. The other thing is school district, and...
Yeah.
This is still a moving target, and I'm sorry, Wendy, but I want to take just a couple minutes and let you know where we're at on that. So we had the legislation that was passed a month or so ago. We, when I say we, me, Mayor, Eric, Tina, who represent Pleasant Grove, when we meet with the other three cities, three, two weeks ago, we had to sit down with Senator Grover to discuss what the next steps are moving forward. The key date is when the new school board takes office, which is going to be at the end of November. They have changed the law, so that when the new school board gets elected in November, and the results are certified, which is usually two weeks later...
Right.
Then they can be sworn in and take office right then and there, they do not have to wait till January. So that has been put in, just so that they can get running sooner rather than later. And once that happens, we are, I keep saying this, we're officially out, but I don't know, somehow maybe the city is going to be brought back into this. But there is an understanding that we, as cities, have limited powers in what we can or can't do. The best thing we can do, and what we've been trying to do, is advocate for policies that would be beneficial to what we call the South District. South District, Pleasant Grove, Linden, Vineyard, Orem. We meet with those three cities every other week, and we talk about ways that we can make this the best possible for when the new school district gets elected. We meet with those three cities every other week and we talk about ways that we can make this the best possible for when the new school district gets elected, that they are in the best position possible. In the past legislation that was just adopted, we had four points that we really, really wanted to be addressed, of which none of them were addressed, okay? Now, speaking with Senator Grover, he was like, hey, the politics weren't in line, sorry, I couldn't get you there. I'm going to be proposing future legislation that's going to be more helpful. And that's kind of where we're at right now. There's, uh, various opinions on what we should be doing between now and when the new school board takes office. My opinion is, um, if there's anything that we should do, is be prepared for advocacy in the legislature, if there's a special session. If not, it almost doesn't matter, that just means the, the twenty twenty-six legislative session will be the next time that new legislation's introduced and there'll be a school board in place that is gonna, that is going to be their focus. That will no longer be the city focus. If there is a special session, then I think we need to be prepared to be able to address, um, our issues that we have had all along with the current legislation or the way that the code was, um, written. Um, we are continually working down that path, there's some logistical issues helping the new school board get up and running. Um, there's potentially PR issues to, uh, inform the public of what the city's role is and what we're trying to do. With the understanding that we are doing our best with the powers which are limited as a city to help, uh, with the new school board. If there are tax increases because of this decision, it's not the city council that is making that decision. I, I hope residents understand that. Like we, the school, new school board is going to have to make some hard financial decisions. They're going to close schools, are they going to raise taxes? Are they going to hold back on capital projects, are they going to remodel new schools? I mean, these are all huge deci- decisions, they all cost money and have financial consequences. There's going to be a, a school board that is going to be making those decisions.
You know, Scott, and this, but this is, this is where we tried to, um, advocate directly with Senator.
Grover.
No.
No, Brammer.
Brammer.
Yeah.
Um, that he, he took away our power.
Yeah.
And then he said, not only am I going to take away your power, now I'm going to blame the cities for the increase of taxes. So the residents are, just like, just like the resident said today, what are you doing about, what, what are you guys doing now, right? It's, it was very clear that it was a city vote and the ci- and, and I, and I'm preaching to the choir, I realize that. But, um, it, it's, the residents are looking at us to say, how are you going to raise our taxes or why, how are you going to pay for this? Uh, because it was the way the legislature set it up. And I may be angry about that for a long, long time.
Yeah.
But we've got to do something proactively, in my opinion, as much as we can to work with a school board to ensure that our residents are protected.
So one thing that.
That they know from, like, where that taxed dollar is going.
Sure, sure.
So, one thing that we are still working on confirming, our understanding is the new legislation does not, um, require the new school district to reimburse us for expenses.
Yeah, they took that out.
The legislation leading up to that, that was in there until the final draft. Because we were working under, if we were going to hire lobbyists to help the new school district, we were going to get reimbursed for that and now we would not, okay? So if there is going, are we, if we're going to hire lobbyists to help get something going, that could be, that could be a pretty steep price tag for the four cities.
The fox was guarding the hen house that day.
Well, so, with that being said, with that being said, um, we're still working on things and we are, as soon as there are decision-making points that have a financial consequence. Or that, um, what I would consider be a major policy decisions and things, we will make sure the council is updated. Because right now, most of this is a little bit in a holding pattern until, um, we figure out how we, some of this is just going to be dependent on whether there's a special session or not. And whether there's going to be legislation in the special session, there could be a special session and nothing school district brought up. Okay, that's, that's where we're at on those.
Scott, just.
Okay. Yeah.
Just reminder that Alpine School District is still there as a resource, that's something that I think people forgot in our meeting the other day.
That's right.
Yeah, so, anyway.
Alpine's still operational.
They're still in charge, they're running the schools for the next year and a half.
Yeah.
Or more.
Two, two and a half years.
Two and a half, yeah.
A little under two years, July first of twenty twenty-seven, Alpine School District is still functional. And we're going to have two school districts for, for a minute, okay? All right.
Okay, do we.
Should we get back to budget?
Continue our, or do we want to put that to our next work session?
No, no, here. Here's the thing, I, I don't, I, you know, maybe I joke about this and maybe I need to be careful, again, words matter. I don't ever want the council to feel like if we're talking anything really, that somehow we're not going to give it time because it's getting late or we're not going to give it time because, um, um, something's going on. So I, I, I want to make sure the council understands, feels comfortable, that if we need to have a twenty-hour discussion on budget, then let's have the twenty-hour discussion. Because like it was pointed out, this is the most important thing really that you do, is you set this budget.
Scott, your door, your door is open, we can come talk to you.
No, I understand, but, um.
I like having the public conversation.
I, I just want to point out, and I don't know how deep you're going to get, Scott, if we're going to continue, and I, I mean, I've sent my email, I'm, I'm.
Yeah.
I think all of us up here are comfortable talking to you offline too about this and then having it presented on the twenty-second. But I just want to echo Todd, what Todd said early in the discussion during, during the budget discussion, which is, when we have these utility rate increases, which, you know, hey, that happens because the, the cost of living goes up. But if there are things we can do, that we can move money and maybe forego some projects and, and use money to help mitigate the impact on people in our community that live on fixed budgets. I would, I would appreciate the staff maybe looking at that and coming back and telling us what changes in the budget we could make to maybe lower that, and you already did, I think that's, we already got like a dollar and a half.
Yeah.
Yeah, with a dollar and a half, and I think that was a great move, is there another dollar and a half, is there another two dollars? So that the, the, the citizens, the residents of Pleasant Grove can see that, hey, we're working on using your money to benefit everybody, to pay for the great things we have like parks and recreation. But also to try and keep the costs that are fixed, and I, as, as Director Winterton said, that are necessary, people have to pay.
Yeah.
These utilities if they want to live in our city.
Yeah.
How can we mitigate the cost of, of, of the rising cost of those because that benefits the most people?
And our, and our revenue is going to go up next year, regardless, right? It's, it's, it's going to go up, um, the needed services are going to go up as well, but.
The cost to provide it.
You know, the co- the cost of that, but our, uh, our sales tax revenue, our property tax revenue, that's going to go up incrementally. Um, if, if residents are looking, it's projected, I'm, this is not, this is not, these are not my numbers, but it's projected a three-way split, was going to raise the, the property tax, what, twenty-five to thirty dollars per household.
No, that's not, there's no even, I don't know where those numbers are coming from.
We don't even know, yeah, I mean, that's, that's the board, that's, that's, that's the board's decision, but we, we anticipate a potential rate increase from a property tax.
Maybe, maybe not, all depends on what the new board does.
That's true. Um, so I just think we just need to be very careful this year.
Yeah.
I, I want to be, I want to be very careful this year.
Well, here's what I like, because that, that's your role, I think my role is, because we do this somewhat inherently. So we get five million dollars in budget requests and we, we, we pare it down to the money that we have available. Should we forestall a certain project so that we can go back to the residents and say, hey, we did have a two million dollar surplus, but we're only spending one and a half million of it. That's probably not a recommendation coming from me because we're not going to recommend this unless we feel we need it. Because we can say no to something today, but eventually we're going to have to need it or use it or do it, and it's just going to cost more later. And so as administrative staff, when we talk utility rates, if we were to actually fully fund utility rates, we'd be in here asking for eighty bucks a month more or something. I mean, it would be a huge number because we have tens of millions of dollars in needs. What is, what I, so we're sensitive to that, I mean, you see the projected increase is three percent. Three percent is not enough, it is not enough to meet our needs. This is a, an artificial number that is saying, here's what we feel like politically, we can get away with for our council to say, we're comfortable with that. Because our needs are much more than that.
Right.
And so, and, and I love this because I think we understand the roles. The role of the council is to look out for the citizen and say, hey, Scott, to Todd's point, I think this is the year where maybe we do need to put that project off, okay? And again, you dictate to us how you want to do that. If, if the council says, we want you to go back and we want you to cut a certain amount out, then we would take that back and we would cut that amount out and we would tell you, here's what's coming out and here's what we believe to be the consequences of that. And so those are, the, that's probably somewhat typical in regards to how this works. Um, but for staff, we don't necessarily look at this and say, how can we, we do look at it and say, how can we best manage this and be efficient? But we don't necessarily say, well, okay, how much can the residents bear this year? I don't think we have the answers to that, I think our council would have a, a better answer to that.
Well, and I think it's important to remember that anytime we say anything like sharpen the pencil, go back to the drawing board, it's basically just kicking the can and we've.
Well, no, I don't think so, not necessarily, I mean.
No, it is because I will say it is going to, no, the Todd, Todd.
There's things here though, there's things here that I think we can, that I think we can, we can look at and say, do we need that, do we need chairs this year? As an example, I'm not advocating for chairs, but are there specific things that we can look at? Um, like when my wife comes to me and says, hey, let's, let's look at the budget for twenty twenty-five. I, I don't just say, well, we, we can't go on the trip and she says, well, we're just going to kick that can down the, you know, down the road. It's, let's just figure out, are these things that we really need or do we just say, we're just going to go?
Okay, so.
Does that make sense?
No, except for I've been here long enough to know that when you don't do it this year, when you do decide to do it, it is more expensive.
Definitely understand that principle.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's, I mean.
Excuse me, there's two of you that haven't been here, uh.
Eight years, mayor.
Well, I know, but before that.
Same time as you.
No, 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 third, I'm talking thirteen years ago.
Oh, no, 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 I know, no, no, I, from, from a.
We were in, we were in trouble.
No, I know.
And I, I appreciate the administration keeping us out of trouble.
And I'm not advocating, I'm not advocating for those days.
Okay.
Um, but, but I am.
I'm not either, I'm not saying, I think the three percent, but I'm saying, if there's mu- I, I, I'm just saying, I've looked, and I've set some of my concerns, I don't know that we, I think Megan's here, she wasn't here last time we talked budget.
Yeah.
And there were some questions related to some of those capital projects.
Yeah.
I don't know that we need to take another hour tonight and go through those.
Yeah.
But I, I do want an answer on those eventually.
For sure, yeah.
Do we paint brick?
Yeah.
Because to Diana's point, and to Todd's point, when we paint brick, we actually create a problem for ourselves later down the road.
Because then we have to maintain brick.
Remove the paint.
Paint instead of just having brick.
Yeah.
And so what's the benefit and what's the cost and is it something that gets kicked down the road or is it just something that we just don't need to do?
Yeah.
Right.
And there, there's, and those are some of the questions, but again, I'm, I'm not sure for, for me, if that needs to be answered today or not.
Yeah, it probably doesn't in a sense that we, we have next, we have two weeks, we have, we'll have another budget work session. We have our tentative budget, which we'll adopt, um, but we'll also have a budget work session that day. And we'll continue having these.
And I, and I'm very, very okay with that.
But, but I don't think we need to do that because we have, until we adopt a final budget, we still have two months.
Yeah.
I mean, we still have time to work through these things.
I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, if we were to look at this as every dollar matters.
Well, I think we do.
What would we, hold on, hold on, let me, let me finish. If we look at this as every dollar matters and we're going to pull the dollar out of Miss, Mrs. Smith's bank account and we're mandating that as a legislative body. Can we look at ourselves and say, that is needed right now, today, on every project, that's all I'm saying.
No, and, and that's a, I mean, that's a very, very fair analysis. And again, I think that's the role of the city council, is to look at this and say, I don't think so. As staff, we're, we're a recommending body, we're going to take a look at this, painting, um, the rec center walls white is an excellent example. Is that something, will it make the rec center look a little nicer, maybe brighten things up? I mean, Megan can explain why it's being requested and the council can look at that and say, I just don't think that's a need. And so it's off the li- if you remember last year, we wanted to reconfigure how we did the entry there, we met there, council looked at it and said, I don't think we need to do this, we don't do it. And I want to remind you, it's not like we go back to our office and be like, those jerks are not letting us do what we want to do, that's not the dialogue we have.
Neil's laughing, he, he may be doing that.
And Neil tells me that people do that, so he, I don't know, I was told that people do that, Scott.
There was a, there was a little belly laugh back there with Neil.
And I would expect that from Neil.
It is very important for us to understand, particularly as staff, that you dictate how the money is spent. That is fundamental to city government, okay, that's me preaching a little bit. Our job's to recommend, your job is to say yes or no. Our job is making sure you have all the information. Most of the stuff I think you understand and understand, uh, what we're asking for, obviously when we were talking about some of the PR stuff, the 401K. You need a little more information before you're ready to say yes or no. And that's our responsibility to get that information to you. Again, this isn't us going back and being like, why does the council want to know all this stuff? You are entitled to that, that's your role, our job is to make sure that you're informed. So I, I, I just want to make sure that, um, you know, talking through these things is not a, you know, th- this isn't a point of frustration, this is a point of us doing the best with the city business. Um, dollars matter, the dollar from Mrs. Smith's pocket, that, that matters. And, and, and there could be various opinions on that, so with that being said, if we are getting a little late and if the council's comfortable. I do want to finish with just kind of where we are with utility rates, we didn't quite, um, close that loop. And then in, uh, two weeks, we'll bring back the operational costs, we'll bring back all of this again. Uh, but for sure the operational and the capital of which we'll have Megan, uh, go over some of the, uh, expenses that you haven't heard from her yet. So with that, is there any, anything more on utility rates that you have any questions about or comments or things that you'd want staff to look at? Because, uh, sorry, when Steve makes a comment that, why are we doing this on a second can, is a very legitimate question because I think where you're headed, Steve, is there could be some cost savings here that could maybe save somebody a dollar. If it's not going to impact us by reducing that a dollar, then we just have to do the analysis to say, okay, that's going to take X amount of dollars out of the budget. You know, but we can bring that back to you and say, okay, yeah, maybe there is a cost savings there on that second can. So the, that's the type of stuff that, when you give us feedback, we will come back with, with answers. We're still working on the, the custodial stuff, um, again, we didn't have the answer on the 401K, there's still some loose ends that we're working on. But can we, at least for tonight, not for the full budget, but, uh, close the loop on utility rates?
Absolutely.
Any other questions or concerns?
Yeah, well done on the, on the garbage.
And, yeah.
Well done, that, and that's, and that's, and those are the things we're talking about.
Yeah, yeah, and so what's helpful? Sometimes we as staff will take a look at something, I think our number originally was twelve dollars, we got it down to nine something before we even presented it to you. And so we are cognizant of these things, we do work on ways to get these numbers reduced before you ever see them. Um, but for the council to come back and say, staff, can you do a little better? Then yes, we will, we'll take a look and see where we can do a little better. Again, a little better has consequences, my preference would be we stay with our current utility rates at nine twenty-eight. My preference would be we'd keep our twelve-dollar number because we have costs that we just need to take care of, particularly in utilities. Maybe not as much in, in, uh, solid waste, in garbage, but water, sewer, storm drain, I mean, there, there's, there's so much to be done there that anytime.
Then you know what I'd, I'd love, I would love, and I don't know if the rest of the council would love it, I would love a reven- a P and L on revenue and expenses based upon our current utilities.
Yeah, well, I mean, we, we have that in a sense of, okay, here's all the money that's generated, in fact, I think that's on this page here, that shows you what's generated with the revenue. And then the expenses we can show you are budgets. So, uh, the budgets, particularly water, sewer, storm drain are going to be a combination, there's going to be personnel costs, but most of it's just going to be capital expense. It's going to be fixing water lines, fixing sewer lines, fixing roads, um, doing storm drain projects.
So does this sheet have the balance in the capital accounts?
No.
Like what's in the, uh, fund balance, the reserves? No, it doesn't.
Well, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, we can get to that number.
Because if you're saying to me, hey, solid waste only has seventy thousand. Because if you're saying to me, hey, solid waste only has $70,000, and we're projecting X, Y, and Z projects that are gonna cost $140,000 over the next three years, then I do want to plan for that. I do want to make sure that we're incrementally raising our rates. But if, if we're, you know.
So, solid waste is a bad example, because there's not a ton of capital.
Sure, I get that. But again, you know, our, our capital project, I mean, we're putting a lot of money in the sewer right now from the bond and other places, so.
If you go.
If you look on that five-year plan, that tells you what our five-year plan is.
And if you go sit with Denise, she will literally pull up the ledger for you so that you can see this is the revenue, and this, this is exactly how we spent the money, and then you can see what the projections are.
And quite honestly, if Denise was here, she'd be way better at articulating this, but that's.
And you can ask for the printout of the line item.
So we have a five-year plan, Mayor pointed that out. So where are we at compared to what we need to be at, right? So we, we have $23 million projected as a capital plan in water.
Yeah, so this year, our water increases are gonna generate $179,000 of new revenue.
So where's the capital balance total right now?
For water, I don't know. Probably, probably three or four million dollars.
We're gonna need $23 million in the next five years.
That's if we fully funded it.
Yeah, so I need, I want to know where we're at. And what are, and what are those projects and?
Yeah.
Yeah, what's, what's the fund balance currently?
If, if we're gonna get into, hey, I want $12, then that's what I'm gonna want to see.
Yeah.
If you're saying, hey, $7, because it's just cost of living, that makes sense to me. I can see it in the percentages. But if you're saying, hey, we're gonna do, you know, a 7% increase across the board, I, I want to see the capital projects that are on the, on the horizon and why we need that money.
And, and I think in the past, we've done that in a sense of.
We have.
We, we've showed you a list of projects, here's the intent, here's why we're asking for this on the utility rate. Here's the projects we plan on funding.
But literally, it's just making a point with Denise, and you can go and sit down, and she will actually go over all of it with you.
But I, I just want to say something to, to that. If, if there's individual questions, concerns, we can do that. But sometimes it is a benefit for everybody to hear that, just in a general sense.
I agree.
Okay?
The projects that we've awarded in the last couple of months are actually mostly FY26 budgeted projects. So some of it will be taken care of through the reserves that you talked about, that three or four million dollars in water that we have. The, the, the project we awarded tonight is actually FY26 money that we've, we've allocated. And what I have done just in the last couple of weeks is engaged with a company that does a lot of rate studies and, and performs a lot of master plans. So currently, Horox is creating utility master plans for all the utilities. Then we're gonna transition right into a rate study.
They're updating them, right? I mean, we have them, right?
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're updating, excuse me. And, and it's, you know, the day you publish them, the master plan's out of date. But then we're gonna transition into a full-blown rate study that's gonna dive into super a lot of detail of the five-year plan. Then we gotta jump right into an impact fee facility plan that justifies what we're doing with impact fees as well, and that's tied to both of those studies. So I, I would assume, and then this is all due to the, the pressurized irrigation, that we gotta start a, a volume charge for that. That's mandated, that we have an incremental block charge, or in other words, tier rates for pressurized irrigation. And I figured we might as well dive into all of it. So come December, January of next year, as part of our budget, you're gonna have rate study exhaustion, because it's gonna come and it's gonna be a lot to discuss. We're gonna dive into all of the, the, the features related to the, the philosophy and how we want to approach it. So this year, like Scott mentioned, we hit the CPI at about 3%. We're gonna carry on that, and then it's gonna come, and we're gonna hit it super hard.
No, and I, I appreciate that. I, I just want to also state that I did have a meeting with you and Denise last year about the same thing. I know that I can come in and talk to you, that's why I sent an exhaustive email so that you would have my concerns this year. Because I know that you guys will address them, and I appreciate that about this process.
And I appreciate, I mean, I appreciate the heads up and the email, so we know what to specifically do. So, okay, with that, are we?
Neil, is, are those tiered rates, is that been mandated by, as part of the metering?
Yeah, it's part of metering and part of, I don't know, a few years ago, they required tiered rates as well for water in Utah. Yeah.
So that was part of the meter mandate?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. Any, are, is there anything else before we bring this back in two weeks? Okay. If I can just make a general statement, thank you, Council. I, I do marvel, it's gonna sound like I'm kissing up to you, but you take it for what it's worth. When we have a room full of citizens and you make tough decisions, I, there's plenty of times I sit there and I'm like, I'm glad I don't have to make that decision. It's not an easy job that you have, and just appreciate that we have people that are willing to step up and be a part of that, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, can I ask one question before you, before Scott? I just want a quick, if you can, I don't know, a couple-minute update on the downtown situation?
Yeah, so we are, we're meeting with the grant person tomorrow, it's a Thursday.
The grant and then also test out.
Yes, so Test Out has a mandate that they have to have their front done by July 1st, or we're gonna find them. So they have submitted building plans. Daniel, what are they telling you?
What, they're gonna start here sometime?
Scott, they were actually, they had to part the wall down, and they were actually leveling a lot of that in there, and then they put the wall back up.
Oh, did they? Okay.
Yeah.
Wow, that's good to hear that they're doing something. So I have asked Laurel to apply for that grant. I mean, the council chimed in as well, thank you. I mean, they, so her and I sat down before I left on vacation and kind of walked through that application. So we, we're meeting with the, the mag grant guy tomorrow to really feel like how we want to do that. I think our next step, and this is something, because I'm gone all next week, will be when I get back, is we need to have our first meeting with the business owners and the property owners, because we need to start getting input. And what, that's why I want to ask the mag grant guy is, I mean, do we want to hire a consultant before we do that? Or we just want to have an initial start where it's just the city and the, and the downtown people to just kind of get a feel for what we want to do? Because it would help to have some professional facilitation for us to get a focused feeling on what we want to do downtown. So we're working towards that. So we have, I mean, the grant stuff going, but really our next step is getting the business owners in the room. Well, I say business owners and property owners, because sometimes those are not the same people.
We, we created the, the list that, that has the information from everybody.
Yeah, yeah, Daniel's got me the list of all the business owners, all the property owners. So now it's just a matter of sending an email out saying, hey, we want to meet on May 2nd, 6 o'clock here at City Hall, let's start talking about what we want to do. So that's, that's, that's where we're at.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thanks, Scott. Okay, we'll swing back to our director reports, and like any of the directors, the opportunity to come forward if they have anything that's pressing for tonight, or if we can wait to another time. So who would like to come up? Okay, Daniel.
You must have a, a restaurant to announce.
But, so, I just want to make emphasis that when we have DRC, it's preliminary. I don't even have an application, but I gotta, we start working, and it helps the staff to get ready and knowing what's coming, but I promised I was gonna share this information with you. So I have a steakhouse restaurant coming to the Grove. We did the DRC, and actually I received an email from them, they're, they're, they're ready to go. We kind of have a, no, no, kind of, we had a pre-construction meeting for Chicken Nugget Place in the corner of the boulevards, and, and it looks like.
Chicken Nugget Place, is that what you said?
Isn't that Chicken Nuggets, is that what that?
They're not known for their chicken nuggets. There's one company known for chicken nuggets, and that's Big Dog.
But they have tenders.
That's what I meant.
Tenders.
Yeah.
Chicken filet, we, we have, we.
It's, it's, it's posted.
It's, yeah, so they. It's fully, fully in going. You know, everything is a nugget for me, whether it's a strip or, it looks like a nugget. So it's a, they're, they're full on working on, on actually the physical construction of the project. So we have those, those two, some, some good news for everybody else. And we are in the final stages of a new hotel, as you guys know. So we've been, we were working on a, a new hotel, this is gonna be a, I forgot the name of it.
I think it's a town place suite.
Yes, Marriott, sorry, between Hilton and.
The Hilton is going in right now, that's what's being built.
It's being built.
So that there's a new Marriott True.
Correct. And we're in the final stages of, of getting it approved. So we, we're working on that one. They'll come before you guys, but I just want to let you know that it's almost on the, on the, that one, they've been working really hard, we just, it finalized a, a development agreement.
Is that one on the adjacent to the steakhouse? Is that on the property that's?
No, no, the, the new one that, the, the one that is under construction, yes, is right there.
Yes, I'm talking the new one.
The new one that I'm talking about is on State Street, where Battle Creek Business used to be.
Wait, where?
North County Boulevard, North County Boulevard.
North County Boulevard and State Street, behind the new bank that is right there, TC Bank.
It's that, it's that long sliver, yeah.
Where Battlefield Park used to, we approved a plan for Battle Creek Park, if you guys remember, so.
But is the access on State Street or access on?
On State Street, on State Street with, with emergency access toward the North County Boulevard. But the main one is from, from State Street.
Is that where that camp was set up, that homeless camp for a while?
Kinda, yes.
Okay, all right, good.
So, so there was just.
There, there, there really was.
It really was.
No, there really was.
There, there's, there's progress, and we want to welcome, welcome our new, you know, the new businesses to our city, so.
Thank you.
We had to, we had to get the police involved. They, they've been there for four, five, six weeks.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, keep, keep that. The steakhouse, take it with a grain of salt, because we're in the very early stages of it.
Yeah.
Okay?
It's awesome.
Be positive, Daniel, be positive.
Okay, directors, anybody else? I, I, I don't want to cut you short, but I just, Chief Brown, you, you're good? Everybody good back there? Okay.
I've got one that's five seconds long. Just a reminder, Thursday is our annual recognition event.
Yes, it is.
It's going to be awesome. Our awards, our raffle prizes at the rec center, 11:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m.
Okay.
Having been number one during the March Madness thing, I was wondering who actually won?